Welcome to the March 15th meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission. I'd like you to join me, please, in a flag salute.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Paul McGee. Commissioner Nora Dukas.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Anstott.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Now is the time set aside for public comment for matters that are not on the agenda. I have at least one speaker card, Chris Stevens. Morning, sir.
Good morning. This is Anstott, members of the commission. I am Chris Stevens, the Director of the Resource Management Agency. And I was here today for two minutes this morning. I wanted to take this opportunity, first off, to thank Kim and her staff for putting together this workshop for you and for members of the MACs and staff that are here today. And also let you know that this is really part of a larger outreach program, a public outreach program that the Resource Management Agency is, and I'm barking on this here, we're trying to get out to the community and more actively share with folks what it is that we do. We think that this has been a service in the long run very well, and serves the community, you know, perhaps get ahead of and avoid some problems and issues that we're often encountering. You know, what's here today is largely related to the, like I say, something like 1,300 or 1,500 permits, planning permits that are issued by the planning division every year. But within the Resource Management Agency, we have a number of other divisions that are out in the community every day and do quite a bit of work. And I wanted to just, I'll briefly write down those for you and for the folks in the audience for you, and give you kind of a sense of what we do. And hopefully, there'll be an interest amongst you and those folks that are out here in the audience that you may want to have other divisions of RMA speak to either the commission or the whole, the municipal budget committee, or any other group that we're available to talk to.
But real quickly, within our environmental health division, for example, we regulate food facilities. I think everyone's familiar with restaurant inspections and such. We inspect and regulate approximately 4,000 facilities within the county. We also, within environmental health, have programs that look at our hazardous materials and hazardous waste sites, believe it or not. We have 2,600 of those sites within the county of Ventura. They also have to review and inspect all public pools. And those include, for example, pools that are at apartment complexes and such. We have 1,700 of those in the county of Ventura. So, and finally, within environmental health, we have something called a cross-connection program. And I won't get into the details of that, but it is a program to ensure that our water quality and our water systems are not contaminated. There are 9,000 devices that are inspected every year in the county of Ventura. We also have our weights and measures division. They inspect all of the weighing and measuring, commercial weighing and measuring devices in the county. There are 10,000 of those that are inspected every year. And then, we also, I think, are most familiar, more familiar with our building and safety division, who do our building, electrical plumbing permits. 3,000 of those permits, you know, issued in any given year. And then finally, we have our code compliance division, responsible for enforcing the zoning ordinance in our building code. And we get approximately 600 to 800 new enforcement cases every year. So when you add all of that together, we are deeply involved in what's going on in the community, both in the unincorporated area and the incorporated area. And we're trying to get out, as I said, and kind of share with folks that information, what it is we do, how we do it. And it's amazing, when we get that information out, how we're able to address issues, you know, before they get too large or become far more complicated and take much more time and money to address. So I know that you, all of you, as well as the folks in the audience, are involved in numerous public, you know, community groups. And we've been trying to reach out to rotary clubs, you know, alliance clubs, downtown associations, chambers of commerce. And we'll be doing that throughout the year. And so I guess I would invite you and anyone in the audience, if you have groups that you think would be interested in hearing about our programs, be it one specific program or in general, to please contact the Resource Management Agency. You can contact me directly. I can leave some cards with Don Yell for anyone here and let us know. We would be happy to come out and talk to, do a group and share with you what it is that we do. So with that, I'll just thank you again for the five minutes and wish you luck today with the workshop.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who has a public comment? Hearing none, then. Director?
Thank you very much. So we'll go to item two on the agenda. My name is Kim Pearlheart. I'm the planning director here at the county, and welcome. I'm so happy that most of the, or a good portion of the MAC members are able to attend. I know a lot of you are busy and have day jobs, so this is available on Granicus, and we did put that out, that link, in case you want to revisit any of the issues that we're talking about today. We have MACs going back. It looks like the oldest one that we had was the Ojai Valley MAC that was formed in 1974, to a MAC that was formed in Somas just two weeks ago. So we have a long history of MACs. As Chris said, we're going to be out in front of you when items are on the agenda. We'd like to engage with you. If you have questions on any items that are placed on the MAC's calendar, we have staff here that can help, and we will be out at the MAC meetings as well. So you'll be seeing a lot more of us. I'm always here to help. I think all of the staff members have my direct number, so I want to let you know that we are very interested in being engaged and engaged with the community, and this is a good first step in that. So what we have for you today is training, some of what the planning commission members have asked for specifically, and some of which we do or we attempt to do on an annual basis, and some of the things that I just thought would be interesting to you. We're going to start out by doing planning and jurisdictional boundary issues at the Channel Islands Harbor. That's something that Richard, or Commissioner Rodriguez, asked for, and we're lucky enough to have Lynn Krieger, the Director of the Harbor Department, to come and give us a presentation on that. So we're going to start with that.
Good morning, members of the commission and MAC members. I apologize in advance for having my back to you. This is an awkward placement, guests and other staff. I'm here this morning, Lynn Krieger, Director of the Harbor Department for the county, as Kim said. And we are, we have some kind of odd jurisdictional issues, actually, that we probably don't spend enough time talking about, although we do talk about it a lot every time a problem comes up about how to treat different things. This is an aerial view, looking down the harbor from its entrance, and you can see we'll have a better...
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
Would you be more comfortable coming up? I'll take a seat in the stands and you...
Oh, that's all right. No, this is fine, as long as everybody can see.
All right.
I'll just turn around when it's time for, if there are any questions, to make sure, or as a chair, maybe you can help and...
Yes.
Make sure somebody in the back doesn't get ignored. But thank you very much for your offer. Okay, so this is the view from the entrance, and this is the harbor proper. You'll see a better picture of this. I'm just going to give you just a tiny bit of background, because most people don't know how the harbor came into being. And it actually took us several years of doing research to figure it out ourselves. And we really came out of the construction of Port Huinemi in 1939. And what happened, you'll see a picture in a minute, is that the sand flow down the coast was interrupted by the construction of the port. One of their jetties sticks out and directs sand right down the submarine canyon, the Huinemi Canyon, that's right off the coast, which meant that sand flow was interrupted down the coast. So by 1942, erosion was documented. That's because there was flooding in Port Huinemi and on the Navy Base to the south. So the Corps by 1945 already was looking for a location for a sand trap, and congressional authorization was in 1954. So you can see here how close we are. This is Channel Islands Harbor. Here's the port. This little waterway here is a remnant of the Edison Canal that I know you hear about, which now just comes straight down through the harbor entrance. So we are very close neighbors. And you can see here, here's the Port of Huinemi. You see this little jetty, and you see this canyon, which drops off to 1,000 feet, and there goes the sand. Here, you can get, here the islands out here, but you can get a view. You see how the sand moves down the coast, swirls around and settles down right in this sand trap. So when you hear about dredging in our harbor, it's really not about the entrance or keeping the entrance clear. Our entrance is right here. It's about building up this sand to move it down coast to this skinny little beach and let Mother Nature reload the beaches the way it used to do. Here you can see before dredging, you can see kind of a skinny area down here, and here's after. That's gone, and how much wider this is, and it picks up. So this is why we work very hard, as Chris was talking about the job, as many people don't realize, we spend a lot of time with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Navy to make sure that this happens. Again, you can see the difference in the beach here after dredging. And again, this just gives you a view of how the sand trap works. It works beautifully. The Corps brings people out all the time, because they're very proud of this installation. It's the first of its kind in the country, I believe. So the county owns, you as its citizens own, this area around the harbor. This is Harbor Boulevard, Channel Islands Boulevard, and Victoria. Everything inside here, including the land under the water, is owned by the county. There are three harbors in Ventura County, and the three different kinds of legal organization that are available in the state of California are all in this county. One is Port Huinemi, or the Oxnard Harbor District, and they have an elected board, as you know. There's the Port of Ventura, which is a port district, whose members are appointed by the City Council of Ventura. And then there's us, and we're just a unit of general government. We operate within the county as a general fund. Behind us, you see areas in the city of Oxnard. This is the old Mandalay Bay area, for those of you who are familiar. Seabridge and Westport, which were added into the city. We ourselves have about 2,200 boat slips, but we have, we manage the 4,000 slips that use the harbor entrance there. We have 32 ground leases, marinas, restaurants, commercial apartments, condos. One hotel now, not two. We will have two again after this recession. Commercial fishing and sport fishing, and a fuel dock. And as Chris said, for RMA, we have a wide range of duties. We have harbor patrol. We do maintenance of our 320 acres plus two miles of county beach that we manage on behalf of the county. We have lease management and audit. We have our coastal plan, which is a public works plan, which I can describe and take questions about. We have marketing and events, and then we do our dredging coordination. We manage our own capital projects. Like public works in the fire department, we have control over our capital projects. We do budget preparation, of course. We have a lessees association. And then we have some programs, like one example is our voluntary snowy plover protection program on Hollywood Beach. And then we coordinate on joint department projects, and we house the Harbor Foundation. So we have several jurisdictions that overlay the harbor. First, we're owned by the county. We have a public works plan certified by the Coastal Commission, which is operated by the county and is the primary coastal plan. In the county's plan, we're what's called a white hole, because there's this public works plan underlying that is over the harbor. However, as a transaction in 1963, the land area of the harbor is also in the city limits. So we also have the city and their local coastal plan, which is lower in priority than the county's public works plan, but does have some impact. We get our building permits from the city. We have traffic control that's from the city, so we work with them on that. However, even though we are in the city limits, we receive our water services from the Chalice Beach Community Services District. We receive our sewer services from the city. So we also deal with the elected board of the Beach District for water services. The residents inside the harbor are not voting members of that district, because they live in the city, and that's their primary voting location. There's been a lot of tension over the years about being part of a district where you have no real representation on the elected board, and that, you'll hear that surface periodically. I'm expecting that may come up again one of these days. So again, you see this little green triangle in this back area. That's city of Oxnard, water, sewer, everything. The yellow area is county. That's county everything. And then this blue area is in the city, but has water services from a district.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In the lower right corner of the blue area, that shopping center there that's on the corner, county property, but do the buildings belong to private?
Yes. In fact, I'm going to run through a list of projects. I mean, I can answer that now, or we can just get to it? Yeah. We operate through, though, through private ground leases for most of the properties, and private parties do the construction, make the investment, and they own, they have possession, possessory interest on those properties until the lease ends. So, I mean, you can already see, we have the sheriff in the water and the police on land, county fire in the water, city fire on land. We have our own patrol...
Excuse me, ma'am, would you do that again?
So we have the sheriff in the water, city police on land.
Okay.
We have county fire in the water, city fire on land. We have our own patrol. We have the Coast Guard.
Your own patrol, police?
We have the harbor patrol.
Okay.
Which is also a safety unit, unarmed, that does water-based patrols. So we have a lot of folks to be talking to all the time.
My goodness.
This is, not to mention the permitting, not to mention the permitting agencies, which you're all well aware of, you know, the Army Corps and the Regional Water Quality Control Board and, you know, Air Pollution Control District and so forth. We have, well, I should actually change this front one. I'd say about half our facility is dated now, because in the last couple of years, in spite of the recession, a bunch of the facilities been replaced. I'm sure Commissioner Rodriguez has noticed that. We have two marinas that have been fully replaced, one underway. That sounds like a small matter, but the first marina that was replaced was a $14 million investment. Marine-based construction is very expensive. Marine Emporium Landing has been rebuilt. I have some pictures. Topper's Restaurant, a west side, we redid the revetment. I'll show you pictures of these, so I don't want to belabor it. This gets to the gentleman's question in the audience. These yellow parcels are the parcels that are underground leased or are to be leased. The green parcels are county-owned and operated. There are a few blank parcels. This is a marina we operate, a park we operate, and the public launch ramp. But these are generally the, so you see, the bulk of the harbor is underground leased to private entities. Here's a partial list of the agencies that also have permitting and approval authority, of course, the board, because we work under the supervision of the board. The Coastal Commission, the Corps, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Fishing Game. We have a lot of dealings with those folks. Regional Water Quality Control Board and Air Pollution Control and others. We're doing a lot of work right now with NOAA Marine Fisheries.
Excuse me.
Yes.
So how does the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Fishing Game Department interface with you?
With each other and with us?
What are the jurisdictions in that area?
It's kind of an imperfect process. I guess that's...
Usually is with those two.
Yeah, the prettiest face I could put on. Whenever we have an activity, whether it's maintenance, if it involves removing piles or replacing dock sections, generally, we will pull a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, and they are the commenting agencies. They don't issue permits to us, but they add conditions to the Army Corps of Engineers permit. The difficulty for us is sometimes what they want is in conflict with each other, what U.S. Fish and Wildlife wants and what California Fishing Game wants. And so then, our real goal in that is to make it take the least time possible to get to some resolution, because we either have deadlines with money to be spent, or we have work that's seasonal that needs to be done, because we have, you know, seasonal use of boating infrastructure. So it's really part of the comment process. Actually, one of the more difficult, because they're also getting involved in wildlife issues, which is a surprise to me, is the Regional Water Quality Control Board is now commenting on fish issues and other issues. So they're, yeah, so they're a third agency to be involved in that conversation. So that's how it works. Completed projects, just to give you a quick rundown. Hampton Inn, we're very happy with the performance of this. It's generally been in the top 10% nationally, quarter by quarter, almost the entire time they've been in service. This just gives you an example of a kind of a project that Fishing Game, Fish and Wildlife, the Corps be interested in. We had some revetment that was, in my opinion, never was properly built. That was a mile long, and we have boat slips there. So we did a full replacement, pulled the whole thing out and rebuilt it. This is the after. So that was a project that had everybody's comments. Channel Islands Marina is the first to be replaced. This is when they first opened. There are more boats in there now. It's not full. Marine Emporium Landing, a new building, there's a refurbished building over here, but two new buildings on that parcel, with four restaurants, I believe, and a new wine bar about to open. Ana Capai Marina did a renovation. They spent about $2 million just doing upgrades to their marina. And then, in addition, they did renovations to their clubhouse, which is very nice. The apartments that are on our peninsula also did about a $4 or $5 million renovation project, adding more common space, doing work in their pools. We've done a banner program. This alone took us, I think, over three years to get all of this in place. So we're very happy with that. It trades out every couple of months. Then we have our construction in progress. Oops, sorry. We have a replacement marina here, but almost equally important to us, there was no public access along this part of the waterfront. It doesn't go into the boatyard, but we have 1,500 feet. Even in this recession, our lessee kept his commitment to add this promenade along the waterfront. 1,500 feet, which is five blocks of 10-foot-wide promenade with lighting benches and so forth, is not an inexpensive proposition. So, Kim, if you'd like, we can add everybody here to the invitation list. We're going to do some kind of recognition for him to come down and be recognized for honoring his commitment.
I have another question.
Yeah.
I guess I should have said I'm turned right on the online board mat.
Okay.
Although I don't have any direct connection with this, I do actually work across the street from something you're talking about.
At the base?
So, but what is the occupancy in the boat dock areas these days? Is it...
We're at about, we're just a little over 80%, which is pretty consistent with Marina Del Rey. We ran at 95% with a waiting list for some sizes for years, but since 2008...
Yes, people didn't sell their boats.
Partly because of changes in financing for boats, partly because of a new luxury tax that was adopted, timing is everything. And partly because of the opening of 800 new slips in Seabridge at this, in October of 2008. We've had some vacancy. It'll come back. We're just being patient. And our lessees have been pretty good. Yeah.
You probably mentioned this, but what's happening with the lobster trap restaurant and the Casa Serena?
I am going to go to that.
You're going to get away from that.
Yeah. Okay. Channel Islands Landing, Channel Islands Harbor Landing and Boatyard is the place I'm talking about, the new promenade. Ana Capai Marine Services is also a boatyard who have been doing very well in this recession. Who knows why? But they are also going to be replacing their small marina in front of them, preparing for the future, is what they're saying. Peninsula Park, we do a lot of work in public access, has a grant awarded to do 50% of the cost. This is Peninsula Park. So we're going to rebuild this restroom, take it out of the view corridor, tuck it back here, and replace this entire dock structure. Our restrooms are very old. Every 40, 50 years, you really have to replace those public restrooms.
Lynn?
Yes.
Just for clarification on that photo.
Yeah.
The lower part of the slide, that's the old Casa Serena, right?
Right.
And so that's a park.
Right, and this is a...
That's Peninsula?
This is Peninsula Park. This is where we have our summer concerts in the summer and the little theater program.
Thank you.
Free summer concerts. I think it's 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock on Saturday afternoons, posted on our website. We got a lot of people. Launch ramp improvements, this entire area, well, actually, this entire area is going to be rebuilt, starting this fall. And here, we're changing turn lanes because of the Navy Base, and the gate here has gotten so much busier. We've had people pulling boats, pulling out in the middle of traffic. That's not really working for us anymore, so that's getting fixed. We have our boating instruction and safety center. I'm aboard with just a few slides on that. The walls are up. They're not enclosed yet, but they're up. This is in cooperation. All the money's coming from private donors, the state, the harbor, some from the National Marine Sanctuary for exhibits. But this will be a community resource countywide. If you're familiar at all, this is the Whale's Tale. This is the New Maritime Museum, which will be opening in May, and here's the boating center. That's without any of the plantings or anything. That is, the boating center will be operated by the university. Our junior sailing program will be moving in there, along with the university's sailing teams and all their recreation programs. But we also have a substantial exhibit program. This is a gigantic 28 by 32-foot nautical chart in granite, built to the size to accommodate a classroom of school kids to come out and look at, this is where I live, this is where the islands are, this is where the shipping lanes are. And then up on the wall, right next to that, is a 3D chart to show, a lot of people think the bottom of the ocean is like a lake. It's flat, but it's mountains. You know, the islands are a continuation of the Santa Monica Mountains. So you get a better illustration of that in a 3D graphic. There are also indoors, there are a number of exhibits, including this Magic Planet. If you've never seen one, you have to come down. You do exhibits here. You can do, someone could build the Ojai fires. When the ashes picked up on the airstream, where does it go? This particular one, we have Mount Penatubo in Indonesia, when it exploded several years back, tsunamis are built in on here. It's a great educational tool with a touchscreen. You can look at whatever it is you'd like to see. There's also a smaller one of these that's going to be going out to classrooms around the county to prepare kids who can't come down. And our foundation is raising money to help pay for school buses, since the budgets in schools are so tough. Here's an example of a 3D chart. NOAA brings their touch tanks over for kids to be able to get a sense. So that's underway. That'll be opening in October. We have a few major reconstruction projects still to go. One is the replacement of the Casa Serena Hotel. That has been, there has not been a new hotel built in California, really, since the recession started. As long as you can buy a hotel for 50 cents on the dollar, it's not going to happen. Fisherman's Wharf, we are getting some expanded interest in again. This will be retail, apartments over retail, mixed-use project, needs to go through the Coastal Commission, so that'll take a little while. We're working diligently to complete and improve our pedestrian promenade, and we're making significant progress on that. We're working on some additional park space around the harbor, and we have proposed additional space kind of over by the boating center, over by Marine Emporium, back here by the bridge, and we'd like to see another pocket park out at the end where the view is so good. The board has adopted a plan related to that. We have five major parks in the harbor. There are five islands. We are the Channel Islands Harbor, so each of the parks will be named for one of the harbors and have information about that island. The first is Santa Barbara Island, which is the area under the bridge, because Santa Barbara Island has the cliffs, and this has that slope. So we're working on final plans for this now. It will look something like this, instead of the dirt patch that we've always had, and provide a walk under for Mandalay Bay. We have plans for creating some pocket parks. We're just picking off one each year and trying to improve. Board also adopted stands for our waters, standards for our waterside walkways, to ensure that we have planting and enough width and handicapped accessibility. Victoria Avenue, I'm, you know, for years now, I've seen kids walking along that unimproved shoulder to the school buses, and we're going to get our first section of sidewalk in yet this year. Peninsula Yacht Anchorage needs entire marina replacement. I think that will take a while. This one will come later this year. And then we have our sport fishing area that needs reuse entirely. And that's it. I don't know if you have questions. I know that was a quick run-through, but...
Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I'm Mike Paul.
Oh, yes.
Just curious, I think you touched on this in the beginning, but what is the governance of the Channel Islands Harbor? Is it an appointed panel or...
The Board of Supervisors sits as the board for Channel Islands Harbor, which is totally owned and operated by the county.
And the funding source purely...
It's only from leaseholds. We, as the old saying goes, we live on what we hunt, forgive the expression, but the private parties who develop the harbors pay us rent, and that pays for all of our services plus pays for services we receive from the county.
Okay. Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
Would you, we either have to have the people with questions come up, or if you Would you, we either have to have the people with questions come up, or if you would repeat the question.
I'm sorry, I've got to talk to the microphone.
That's all right.
Yeah, the question was of the governance of the harbor, how is the harbor governed? And what I was saying is the board of supervisors sits as the board for Channel Islands Harbor, which is totally owned and operated by the county, and we live on the rent received from lessees and pay for county services.
Thank you.
So if I may follow up, then there's no assessment district or anything, again, it's just strictly from the private funding?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Lynn, just a follow-up on those two questions. The harbor has a foundation.
Yes.
And could you kind of explain the foundation and how it interfaces with the operation of the harbor?
Yeah, there is a harbor foundation, it was originally created to replace a previous foundation that had been in the community that, for various reasons, collapsed. They, the short version is they didn't buy insurance for one event, somebody was really injured and, and there were, you know, subsequent lawsuits and all kinds of problems, so that one was set aside and this one was created. It provides funding for events, and the harbor department does contribute some money to the foundation for events, because through the county, we can't create cash drawers or have events with alcohol or do any of those kinds of things, so the foundation does take care of that, the Tall Ships Festival that comes. It also collects, the lessees contribute every year to the foundation, some voluntarily, some it's part of their lease, and then we get significant private contributions, for example, for the boating center, the source of fundraising for the boating center, the private donations come through that foundation. We provide bookkeeping support for the foundation, but are not, we aren't on it or don't control it any other way.
So harbor administration doesn't sit on that board or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No, it's chaired by a gentleman named Bob Snyder, who has been on that board for a long time.
So the foundation funds then, say, the 4th of July fireworks show?
Yes, we do get a little money from the city for that, but otherwise, yes, that's funded through the foundation.
Okay. One more. And just to follow up on the, you commented about the BISC and it's going to be operated by the university, Channel Islands University. Who's going to maintain it, does that include the cost of maintaining and operating it, or just the operation oversight and programming?
No, the university will take possession for 25 to 50 years, they will operate it, maintain it, staff it, everything.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I should say real quickly too, the foundation also supports, in addition to the department, between 100 and 150 scholarships a year to the various youth programs in the harbor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, I want to thank Lynn, because I live down in that area, and I've lived there for 15 years, and I have seen the changes in the harbor under her leadership, and that was a great presentation, and I learned a lot today, and thanks for coming down, Lynn, I know you're busy. So we're going to continue on, we have a tight schedule today, I'm hoping to get everybody out here by noon. We're going to have the planning division's permit processing program, we want to give everybody an overview of our permit processing, and that's going to be done by Dan Clement, and then that's going to be followed by Tricia Meyer, who's going to come in and talk about the planning division's condition compliance program.
All right, Mr. Chair, Representative of the Commission, and all the MAC members. Well, Dan Clement, I'll be manager of the residential permit section, it's kind of misleading, because we do have a heck of a lot more than just residential permits, but that is our emphasis, but what I'm going to give you today is kind of like the overview of the discretionary permit process, it can be very complicated, depending on the type of project and the amount of public involvement and where the application ends up, so it's going to be kind of the process at the 30,000-foot level, but please feel free to contact me after this presentation if you don't answer any of your questions.
You know, if I could just jump in really quickly, Dan, I think that as we get into the specifics of these types of presentations, I just want to make a real simple statement for the record, that these following presentations are for general information and training purposes only, and should not be relied upon in any specific land use entitlement matter, which all may vary on the facts and circumstances of each individual case, so I just want to put that on the record, that I know that Dan's going to do a great job of getting into the details here, but again, this is for training and general information purposes only. Thanks.
Our good attorney, the important disclaimer. This first slide is just, I know it's a little difficult to read, by the way, all of our presentations are going to be posted on the website, so you're more welcome to take a look at it afterwards, but this chart shows the various types of discretionary entitlement applications that the planning division has processed from 2004 through 2011. I should say that these projects also involve legislative actions, which are something separate, those will be discussed later on in some other presentations this morning, and, but what this slide shows is that we have a number of different types of applications involving permits for development as well as subdivisions. One disclaimer that, don't, these numbers aren't gospel at this point, I was unable to filter out some of the ministerial types of parcel map waivers, so the numbers showed here are a little bit inflated, but what you can see is that the majority of the applications that we process are conditional use permits and planned development permits, and actually, a lot of modifications to those permits, we'll issue them, and then down the road, applicants will want to change one or more features of their projects, and they come back in and apply for a modification to those permits in order to allow that. But we are working really hard at the planning division here, you can see, over the roughly seven-year period, we've got about 1,600 discretionary entitlement applications that we've processed, so it's quite a bit going on. So, this is the discretionary permit process flow chart, make sure you study it very carefully, because there's going to be a quiz after this presentation, just joking. As you can see, this flow chart's fairly complicated, wait till you see the Sequo flow chart, it's even more complicated, so once again, I'm just going to highlight the major steps and the procedure that's involved with an application, and then also let you know as MAC members when it is appropriate to be participating in the process and give us that important feedback that we need in order to do our jobs well. And like any good fad, we're going to reduce this down to a 10-step program, so these are just general phases of the application process, and just taking the first one, the pre-submital research and review phase, and what this phase involves is applicants or applicants representatives gathering information in order to prepare their application and submit as adequate and complete of an application as possible. And there are a number of resources that are available, you can go to the planning division public counter, which is on one floor up from us, speak with staff members, get general information about the zoning or land use of your property, and obtain a copy of the entitlement application. There's actually quite a bit of information posted online on the planning division's website, and a website that was created as a part of the Get to Excellence Plan Program by the board of supervisors, it's called One Stop Permitting, and it actually goes into much greater detail each of the steps of the process that I'll be explaining throughout this presentation. Applicants also have the option of paying for a focused review of applications before they even submit the application, so, for example, if there is some aspect of your project that you're envisioning that requires some focused research, you have one or two important questions that you would like an answer to, you can pay for pre-submital research and review, and a planner will research the question and provide you with a written response to your question. And you can also pay for a development review committee meeting, and what this consists of is, the development review committee consists of all the county staff who participate in the review of a discretionary permit application, and for projects that are going to be more complex or present difficult or challenging policy considerations or issues, you can pay for the development review committee to review your application materials in whatever form you have them at that point in time, and then the committee will convene and applicants can come in and discuss what they see and what they found in their research, and try to give you a heads up as to what you will need to address before you submit your application. And then finally, you can schedule a meeting with Mr. Winston Wright, he's the discretionary permit coordinator or his designee, he is responsible for the intake of applications, as we will see in the next step of the program, which is actually the application submittal. So once applicants or the representatives have compiled the application materials, what they do is they make an appointment with Mr. Wright or one of his designees, and then at that intake meeting, Mr. Wright will go through the application materials and see if all of the component parts of the application are there. He's, he does not have the time and in some cases, the expertise to go through each one of the component parts to make sure that they are adequate, that's going to occur in the next phase of the review, but he's going to do a check just to make sure that all the parts are there and the application looks good enough so that we can take that in. Now, as a part of the board of supervisors' Get to Excellence Plan, which they initiated a few years ago, we revised the discretionary permit application packet, and we did, that is county staff did our best to lay out all the different requirements for a discretionary permit application. And this, the point at which we take in an application is actually very important, because in the state government code, there's a section called the Permit Streamlining Act, and that sets forth the timelines within which we must process a discretionary permit application, and it's all keyed off that application submittal date, and then as you're going to see, the application completes this date, which I'm going to describe in a second. So when we accept this application, that initiates a 30-day public review, excuse me, review period in which county staff is going to review the application to determine whether or not it is complete, which takes us to step number three in the process. So, after the application's submitted, the application is then farmed out to all the various county agencies that might have some sort of involvement in the application, this is, there's a number of agencies and districts and divisions and sections of agencies that review applications. On the slide, you can see there's about 17 of them, and if you're to kind of use a metaphor to describe how this occurs, if you're to look, consider it to be like a wheel, the planning division's the hub of the wheel, and the spokes go out to each one of the reviewing agencies, so we're responsible for farming out that application to all the agencies, alerting them to the application, and let them know what the deadline is by which they need to respond to us, so that we can make that first 30-day deadline. And what the agencies are reviewing the application for is to make sure that they have all of the information and materials to analyze the project in accordance with the laws that they enforce, which are related to that permit application. And the second thing they're looking for is that if an initial study is required for the project, which I'll describe in a second, whether or not they have all the application to prepare that initial study. I've listed some of the laws that might come into play and what we are evaluating an application against or for. These are general plan and zoning laws, environmental laws, there's also a number of special ordinances, such as the Cultural Heritage Ordinance, which you'll hear a bit about later on this morning, as well as various state and federal laws that may apply to a project, and each one of these agencies are reviewing the application to make sure that they have all the information, once again, to ensure that the application complies with all these laws. Once again, the Permit Streamlining Act states that we have 30 days in which to review the application, and then at the end of the 30 days, it culminates in a letter back to the applicant, and it will either be a complete letter or an incomplete letter, in the case of a complete letter, that means, yes, we have all the information in order to process the application and we're good to go. However, if any of the materials or information, application are lacking, we will send out what's called an incomplete letter. By law, we set forth what information and materials are required in order to complete the application. And then I'd also like to mention that sometimes we can see during that first 30-day review, regardless of whether or not we can see it's complete or incomplete, many times we can see that the project as proposed will have some sort of fatal flaw, that is, it has some characteristic that is inconsistent with a law that applies to the project application and whereby staff would have to recommend to the decision-makers that they should deny the application because of this inconsistency. So what we'll do is we include advisory information in that letter to give applicants a heads up about what this is and afford them the opportunity to revise their application in order to make it consistent with that law, such that we can make a recommendation of approval to the decision-makers. Okay, so this can be an iterative process, if the application's deemed incomplete, we then inform the applicants of that, and then applicants then have the burden of going back and compiling the materials and information, they submit it back to us, once again, we form it back out to the agencies, that's subject to another 30-day review cycle, and that's repeated iteratively until you get to a point where the application's complete, which then takes you into the fourth step in the 10-step program, which is the environmental review. This is going to be a really quick cursory review of the California Environmental Quality Act, this is a very complicated law, I encourage you, if you don't have much familiarity with this law, that you take a workshop, there are a lot of good workshops on SEQA, Association of Environmental Professionals puts on a workshop once a year here in Ventura, you're more welcome to attend that. But just some general concepts about the California Envir- blah blah, Environmental Quality Act. The four basic purposes of SEQA are set forth in SEQA, and the SEQA guidelines, I've listed them here verbatim, and you can kind of boil them down into two general categories. Number one, public disclosure of the environmental impacts of a project. And number two, if a project is going to have an impact on the environment, you are to try to avoid or significantly reduce those impacts or adopt mitigation measures to reduce those impacts and avoid damage to the environment. And then as a part of the public disclosure goal of SEQA, if in the event, a project is found to have a significant impact on the environment, the decision-makers, if they're going to approve that project, must set forth the reasons why they're going to approve this project despite those unavoidably significant impacts to the environment, that is, how they can find the impacts to be acceptable. And the basic legal standard for SEQA is that if there is substantial evidence as part of the public record to support a fair argument that there will be a significant impact on the environment, you are required to prepare an environmental impact report. So, this is the SEQA process in a nutshell, as you can see, it's rather complicated and can take many twists and turns depending on the type of project, what sort of environmental document is prepared, and what you learn throughout the process. Once again, I'm just going to hit the highlights of all of this. So the SEQA process begins with the determination of whether or not the project truly is a project that's subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. And I should explain that the California Environmental Quality Act only evaluates impacts to the physical environment, that is, physical changes to the environment, doesn't look at social impacts, economic impacts, except to the extent of what sort of physical effect those effects will have on the environment. So we're looking at the whole of the action, that is, what's going to happen to the environment throughout the entire project and all the various approvals that go into allowing that application to be approved. All projects involve some sort of discretionary action. If the project only requires a ministerial permit and there's no discretionary action, you are statutorily exempt from SEQA, you don't even, doesn't even apply. However, I should say that if a project involves a discretionary action and a ministerial action, once again, since we have to evaluate the whole of the action, we're looking at everything, you know, both the discretionary application and the ministerial action, all becomes part of the environmental review process. So, first question is whether or not you're a project, if you are a project, then the next thing we look at is, are you exempt from SEQA, because as part of the SEQA statute, the legislature actually passed certain categories of projects which say, look, these don't even, these aren't even going to be a part of the SEQA process, some of them are rather amusing, they're like 1984 Olympics, you know, pet projects, things of that nature, so some of, there are projects out there that don't even apply, even though they're discretionary and they would involve a project. And then there are other classes of projects that are categorically exempt from SEQA, that is, if you fall within that category of projects and there are no unusual circumstances, you may qualify for a categorical exemption, you aren't subject to environmental review. And as I listed up there, once again, there are exceptional situations that can disqualify a project from being categorically exempt. If a project's found to be exempt, either the applicant or the lead agency, that'd be, in this case, us for discretionary applications, may file what's called a notice of exemption, and that will shorten the statute of limitations period on legal challenges to approve the project from 180 days to 35 days. Now, if the project is not exempt from SEQA, we must evaluate the project using what's called an initial study, and the initial study is a document that has a number of items, these are all environmental resources, hazards, public facilities, that we have to evaluate to determine whether or not a project's going to have a significant impact on the environment. As encouraged by the SEQA statute and the SEQA guidelines, the county has adopted threshold guidelines which assist us in making this evaluation, and we rely upon those guidelines for all projects, and I should also state that there are some unique types of projects where they have unique sorts of impacts, and our thresholds might not get at those impacts, so we are encouraged by law, and we, what we do very often is, we will use other thresholds and bring those in, but you will always see an evaluation of the county's thresholds in our initial studies. The county has also adopted a document called Administrative Supplement to SEQA, it's a very good document for summarizing how the county does SEQA here in accordance with what the state has told us we should do. And I'm not going to get into how we define the significance of an And I'm not going to get into how we define the significance of an impact. It's actually rather complicated. Once again, this is CEQA at the 30,000-foot level. But just one short note on that is that we use the thresholds in the initial study assessment guidelines to determine whether or not there's going to be a significant impact on the environment. So, we have a really short timeframe within which to prepare this initial study. It is 30 days from the time at which we deem that application complete. We must complete the initial study. We do have an option to get a 15-day extension if it's mutually agreed upon with the applicant. So, we are working very hard during that 30- or 45-day review period to prepare a legally adequate evaluation of the project. Now, initial study, there's basically two primary reasons for it. One is to determine whether or not projects can have a significant impact, thereby requiring the preparation of an environmental impact report. It's also designed to, if you do determine that environmental impact report's required, kind of focus the analysis to just those areas which truly do warrant the review. Now, if you prepare an initial study and you find all of the impacts will be less than significant, that is, there's no substantial evidence in the public record to support a fair argument that the project's going to have a significant impact on the environment, we prepare what's called a negative declaration. And there's two general categories of negative declarations. Those where the initial study reveals that there will be no significant impact, no mitigation measures are required, we just go ahead and we can publish that initial study, which now becomes the negative declaration. And then there's another type where we conduct the environmental analysis, and we find that there might be a potentially significant impact to the environment, but we know of mitigation measures that we can apply to the project, which will reduce those impacts to a less than significant level. And those mitigation measures can be changes in the project description or mitigation measures that we, as the lead agency, identify and say, okay. We go to the applicant, we present the mitigation measures to them, and we give them the opportunity to accept them. If they accept them, then we can prepare what's called a mitigated negative declaration. And we also need to develop a program to implement those mitigation measures, those become part of the MND. When we make that determination, we then publish what's called a notice of intent to adopt an ND. And this will be sent out to the MACS. It's also published here at the Government Center. It's also sent to property owners within proximity of the project site to alert them of the decision we've made and to give them the opportunity to provide us comment on our analysis of the project. And as I stated in the slide here, that public comment period will be anywhere between 20 or 30 days. It will be 30 days if we have to, by law, notify other agencies who have discretionary approval over the project of our environmental determination. And what we do is we send a document very similar to the document that you would receive as posted here. It's called a notice of availability. It's sent to Sacramento, to the Office of Planning and Research, the State Clearing House, and they farm out that notice to those agencies to alert them of this environmental document and give them an opportunity to give us feedback on it. Once again, public disclosure is a very, very important goal of the CEQA process. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Good question. When you send out those notices, you send them to other agencies that might have an impact or an influence process in the Ohio Valley? Do you have any city of all I would get notice of your NDs?
That is correct. I'll repeat the question. I'm going to summarize it greatly. And the question was, do we send out those notices to other jurisdictions who might have, you know, interest in the project, such as in the Ohio Valley? Will we notify the city of Ohio? Yes, we do. And in fact, in the case of, for example, environmental impact reports, they're very specific noticing requirements. We not only have to notify those who are within proximity of the site, but we have to notify, if there's any IR prepared in the county unincorporated, we have to notify all of the cities and also surrounding jurisdictions. But yes, we do coordinate with them closely. Okay. And pursuant to the Permit Streamlining Act and the CEQA guidelines, we are required to prepare and have approved, or I say, have a decision on NDs within 180 days from the point at which we deem the application complete. Here at the county, although we're not required to do so in the case of NDs, we do respond to each of the comments we receive on the ND. So, that's why we do take public comments very seriously. That's where it's very important to get the feedback from the MAC on whether or not you think we did our analysis correctly. And what we will do is we'll provide a written response to each one of your comments and include that in the document, which is then presented to the decision-makers for their consideration. After the decision is made on the ND, we are required by law to file what's called a notice of determination. That's filed here at the county clerk. And once again, if we have to involve other state agencies, we also file this notice with the Office of Planning and Research. And what that does is, similar to a notice of exemption for an exemption determination, it shortens the statute of limitations period for legal challenges on the project from 180 days to 30 days.
Sir?
Yes, Florence.
I want to, when I'm bringing this close to you, we used to have applications for planning all the time, and then you list, we do your results, your determination, blah, blah, blah. But we do not know the laws that are affecting these blah, blah, blahs. How can we be assured that what you are doing is correct? There's no check there. Can we not submit to us a summary of the laws that affect, so that we too can be sure that when we say we approve, has submitted, that we do approve the law and not expect that we are complying? Or we say to ourselves, but we don't know that they all are compliant with the laws?
Excuse me, Dan. Would you repeat your question for the record?
I'll do my best to represent it. Florence Young from the El Rio MAC, excuse me, asked a question about how we can document to verify that when we prepare these environmental documents, they are done in compliance with all the laws, and how you can be informed of that. Hopefully, that's a good sufficient summary. Well, in our environmental documents, when we rely upon another document, another law, we will provide a reference or citation to that law. So, that'd be the first place you'd want to look. Second, you know, we, by this presentation and hopefully by the information posted online at the planning and vision website, you can see the other types of laws that go in that apply to these projects. However, what I should say is that, you know, there's one main law that's driving all of this, and that is the CEQA law itself and the implementing guidelines that have been adopted for CEQA. So, you can also look, once again, on that, the document that I referenced earlier, the Administrative Supplement to the CEQA Guidelines, that is a really good document that not only walks you through the procedure, but then it also cites all of the areas of the CEQA, the CEQA Guidelines, which mandates the things that we're doing throughout this process.
Have we sent the MACS a copy of this rule, so we have it in front of us?
We could provide you with links to websites where you could access it, to print out copies of it. For example, this is the CEQA statute and the CEQA guidelines. These are books you can purchase either from the Association of Environmental Professionals or CELSOC, which is an organization of engineers. They publish these, so you can purchase a copy. They're pretty cheap, 25, 30 bucks, and they'll have updates annually to them, but...
When can you purchase them?
You can purchase them directly from the organization that publishes them. For example, once again, the Association of Environmental Professionals is one organization that publishes them. That's this copy right here. And then an organization called CELSOC, which is an engineering organization. So, if you just go online on Google, CEQA, CEQA Guidelines Handbook, you'll see a lot of options available to purchase, so.
Thank you very much.
And I should also state that the Office of Planning and Research also was publishing CEQA and the CEQA Guidelines. However, due to funding cuts, they have not been rigorous in updating them, but they still do post them online. Just a word of caution, sometimes look at the date of publication, because it might be last year's version of it. Yes, ma'am?
In situations where you receive a number of public comment concerns regarding a proposed project in a residential area, if it appears that the concerns and comments of the public seem to focus on the inappropriateness of the particular project, do you ever make a site inspection to see for yourselves?
Okay, the question was, in situations where a project is subject to a substantial amount of public comment and there's criticism of the project, do we make a site visit to sort of assess the situation ourselves? And the answer is yes. What I did not mention is that during that first 30-day review, the planners go out and make a site visit to take a look at the surroundings. Sometimes the other agency staff who are involved with the preparation of the environmental document and the review of the application will also make a site visit, especially if it's a complicated project and a site with unique resources or public facilities or hazardous conditions. They will make that site visit, so, yes. So, once again, getting back to the process, after we prepare an initial study and we determine that an environmental impact report is required, we then are responsible for preparing that EIR. And there are a number of different types of EIRs, with each of which has its own specific requirements that are set forth in the CEQA guidelines. I'm not going to go through each and every one of those, but they're there for your review. Here at the county, most of our EIRs are prepared by a third-party consultant. However, we have prepared a few number of EIRs in-house. For example, as a part of the last housing element update, county staff prepared the EIR. So, there's a request for proposals process that we go through. Typically, the contract amounts to prepare these EIRs are so large that we actually have to go to the board of supervisors to get approval of those contracts. So, it's rather involved, we always involve the applicant before we make a recommendation to the board or Chris Stevens, the agency director, as to whom should, you know, receive this contract. And applicants will review that, make sure that they agree with our decision. And when we make that determination that we're going to prepare an EIR, what we do is we publish what's called a notice of preparation. That's published here. If need be, it goes to the State Clearing House, it goes to property owners within the vicinity of the project site, and all agencies that might be involved with the approval of the project. And this notice of preparation is alerting you and the MACS and the public that we have decided to prepare an EIR, and it's an invitation to you to provide input to us on what the scope of analysis of that environmental document should be. We take it very seriously. Once again, public disclosure and getting public input on a project is very important, one of the most important goals of CEQA. That public comment period runs for 30 days, and also during the 30 days, we will hold what's called a scoping meeting. And that's another opportunity to people to attend this meeting and provide us with what they believe should be the scope of analysis of that environmental document. And the preparation of an EIR, it kind of goes through three phases. There's a preparation of an administrative draft. That's the draft that the county staff and the consultant review and prepare. And then, once we feel it's ripe for being published, then we prepare a draft EIR and ultimately a final EIR. When we get to the point where we're prepared to publish the draft EIR, it is then subject to a public comment period. It's going to run either 30 or 45 days. It's 45 days if we have to notify the State Clearing House of the project. The way we do this is by a notice called notice of completion. And then we will also publish what's called a notice of availability. This is what you will receive. It's a learning need to the fact that we completed this draft EIR. It's available for public review, and you have 30 days or 45 days to go ahead and review it and get your comments back to us. At the end of that public comment period, what we'll do is we'll compile those comments, prepare responses to them, and evaluate whether or not we have to revise and republish any portions of the EIR. If there was a mistake made, or there's an oversight, or new information becomes available, we then must revise that portion of the EIR and then submit it for another round of public review. And then after that is completed, what we do is we take all those comments, responses to comments in the draft EIR, and then it goes to a certification process. And this is what is presented to the decision-makers. I've listed here some of the steps involved with certification. Mr. Quong is going to go over in more detail the three criteria for certification later. Just briefly, what the decision-makers are required to do is they have to make findings for each one of those significant impacts that are identified in the EIR. And if the decision-maker finds that there is going to be an unavoidably significant impact to the environment, and the decision-maker wants to approve the project, the decision-maker has to set forth in a document called a statement of overriding considerations the reasons why the public benefits of the project outweigh these unavoidably significant impacts. That is, how these impacts could be rendered acceptable. So, very, very strict criteria that have to be made if a project is going to have a significant impact on the environment. Okay, this is the big joke at all the conferences on CEQA. An EIR is supposed to be completed within a year with the possibility of a 90-day extension. This is actually very difficult, especially in the case of complex projects. And then, once again, after the decision-makers make their decision on the EIR, we have to publish a notice of determination, and once again, that shortens the statute limitations period on legal challenges to that decision from 180 days to 30 days.
Excuse me, Dan?
Yes, sir.
And what happens if you don't complete it within a year and/or the 90-day extension?
That's a very good question. There's, from memory, there's only one court case I know of where it was even addressed, and it was, I think it might have even been a footnote, in which the courts just acknowledged, yes, in that particular case, the agency blew the timeline, but there was no consequence of it. And many times applicants and jurisdictions, they work together and they'll allow the process to go beyond that time, because applicants and jurisdictions want a legally defensible document, and sometimes it just takes that much time to get there, especially for controversial projects.
So, you're saying the applicant can waive the time period?
That, it's a gray area.
Turn to Robert. Yeah. There's... In a sense, it is a sort of a waiver. Again, I think Dan hit it on the head, is that the agency, the lead agency, who has the project determination, as well as the project applicant, have both a mutual benefit from having the document done in a way that is complete and full and meets all the legal requirements, as opposed to meeting an arbitrary one-year deadline.
And if the applicant insists on the one-year deadline, what happens?
Well, again, I think that that's where the tension is. CEQA, although is designed for a collaborative iterative process, there has, there's lots of compromises, and there's a lot of give and take in the process. So, I have yet to see, and I think Dan points out, there's very few, there's very little case law on the insistence of that one-year timeframe.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's a question in the back of the room.
Going back to the draft, the EIR, the 45-day review period, could you go over again how that period could be extended? What would be the conditions that would allow that? Would it be enough, for example, for the public just to say, oh, we need more time?
Yeah. If you read the CEQA statute, during that period, there's a lot of emphasis on coordinating between us and other agencies that are involved with the approval of the project. If any one of those agencies requests additional time, we can grant it. Majority of the time, we will. And then also, if a jurisdiction that's interested in the project requests additional time to review it, we'll grant to them. But you just got to present it in writing to us that you would like additional time to review it, and most often than not, we will grant that, so. Really quickly, there's just some summary statistics on the types of environmental determinations and documents we've made from 2004 to the present. As you'll see, the majority of projects have been found to be categorically exempt. The next largest category would be those that have NDs, and then a much, much smaller percentage are subject to EIRs. So, after the CEQA environmental review phase, we then go to the preparation for hearing phase. I'm sorry, I think there's a question.
Excuse me, Ms. Eric. There's a question. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Once the EIR's been certified, is there a shelf life to an EIR? Another guy that involves some projects, I'm a director, has shared a larger sensation district. And if a project is delayed, what triggers, you know, an amendment or to a CEQA document? If there's no changes, if something gets delayed two or three years, is that document still valid? Is there some kind of a guideline, a shelf life?
That's a really good question. The lead agency has to make that determination. So, what you're looking for is that, okay, are the environmental conditions that exist at the time which you commenced environmental review, are they the same as what is occurring at that point in time? You also look to see if any laws have changed during that time. And if, for example, if there's a change to a statute regarding, okay, greenhouse gas emissions, and that has changed, most times you'll find agencies will go back and they will revise their analysis and recirculate those sections. So, it's really, it's a judgment call to see if, okay, can the environmental analysis still hold water or have... still hold water, or have conditions change to the point where you can't? So, I'm...
Following up on that, aren't there situations where it's been determined that the CEQA document is a snapshot in time, and for the interest of finality, you go by what was true at that time?
In general, yes. It is always just a snapshot in time. You're trying to get the document complete as quickly as possible, so it really truly reflects, you know, what's going on, and it's a valid document and stuff. But, yeah, that is the case. And then, whenever, for example, you have a project in the future that comes along that's related to that one, if you're going to go back and try to rely upon that environmental document, you've got to determine that, yes, it does adequately address the conditions that exist now while you're reviewing those applications. So, we're in step five. And at this point, once the environmental review is completed, then staff is then required to prepare the project for the hearing for decision-by-decision maker, or in some cases, the decisions made at an administrative staff level. If it requires a hearing, we'll prepare a public notice to notify the public and others of the hearing on the matter that's published 10 days prior to the hearing at the latest. Planning Division staff will also prepare a staff report, and that'll be published no later than seven days prior to the hearing. And, yeah, as a part of that staff report, we'll prepare draft conditions of approval if we're recommending approval of the project to the decision-makers. And anything else I should highlight here? Yeah, just one note, that the documents that we prepare can go through a number of phases of review depending on the complexity and who the decision-maker is. So, it's really very well-vetted before it's published. And then, there is the actual hearing or decision. This is where the planning commission, the planning director, or the Board of Supervisors comes into play, or at an administrative level, staff acting on behalf of the planning director will render a decision on the project. I should say that, once again, not all entitlements require a hearing. They just require an approval letter or a denial letter, which is sent to the applicant. The planning director hearings are really informal. They're held up on the second floor here in the Hall of Administration. Planning Commission and Board hearings are held here. And any decision that's made, whether it's to approve or deny an application, is subject to a 10-day appeal period within which somebody could appeal that decision to the next higher body. If a project is... Oh, excuse me. Supervisor Parks?
I was just wondering, do you have the, where the MAC fits in into that?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you for pointing that out. When we send out the notice of the hearing, we will send a copy of the notice to the Municipal Advisory Committee to notify you of the hearing. Before we go to a hearing or make a decision on a project, if it falls within the MAC's purview, we will notify the MAC of the project's been complete. We'll notify you of our environmental determination as of that point and provide you the opportunity to comment on it. And then, as Mr. Stevens stated earlier, we are now going to be going to the MACs to discuss the project at that point in time. So, MACs, as well as anybody, any member of the public, can attend the hearings or provide written comments to the decision-makers for consideration prior to a decision on the project. Okay. There are projects that are located within the coastal zone here. I'm not going to go into the specifics of the Coastal Act, but if a project is located within the coastal zone, we, as staff, are required by law to notify the Coastal Commission staff of our decision. And if the project consists of appealable development, there are certain criteria that apply to the project. An appealable development, I take this straight out of the Coastal Act. The four criteria are stated there. Basically, projects within the sea and the first public road, or within 300 feet of the inland extent of the beach. Development located on thailand submerged lands, public trust lands, within 100 feet of any wetland, estuary stream, 300 feet atop of seaward face. Development located within sets of coastal resource areas, and then, development that is not principally permitted in the zone. For these sorts of projects, when we notify the Coastal Commission staff of our decision on that application, that they review it, and then they set forth another appeal period. And if somebody wants to appeal the decision, they can then appeal that decision to the Coastal Commission. That is a separate 10-day appeal period. However, if the project is not located in the appeal zone, it's not considered appealable development, all we do is we notify Coastal Commission staff just to let them know of our decision. And this document's called a Notice of Final Decision. Non-applicable development's not subject to that separate appeal possibility. All right. Following that, then, the application then enters into the prior two conditions phase. That is, to effectuate the approval of the application, there will be a number of conditions that the applicant must satisfy. And almost all entitlement applications that we process these days have these sorts of conditions that'll be required prior to a sense of a zoning clearance, which I'll get to in a second, or if, in the case of subdivisions, before you record the subdivision documents, you must satisfy these conditions. Each agency here at the county is responsible for reviewing those conditions and making sure that the applicants satisfy them, and communicate that back to the planner, or in the case of subdivisions, to the Public Works Agency, to let them know that they have been satisfied and they are good to go. This takes us to the ninth step, which is issuance of a zoning clearance or recordation of subdivision documents. Once again, after all those prior two conditions have been satisfied, then if it's the case of a discretionary permit, what planning staff will issue is called a zoning clearance. It's a ministerial over-the-counter permit. We just go through those conditions and say, yep, you've satisfied all of them. Here's your zoning clearance. You are now good to go. Or, in the case of a subdivision, they record the subdivision documents, either with the county surveyor or the county clerk's office, and that effectuates the approval of the After that, there are a number of conditions that must be satisfied and maintained throughout the life of a project, and those require long-term monitoring. And that takes us to the final step, which is condition compliance review, which I will turn over to Tricia Meyer. However, before we do that, I'm more happy to answer any questions you might have. Once again, I apologize. Tried to do my best to summarize this rather complicated process in 30 minutes, and I didn't achieve that. But if you have any questions, feel free to contact any of the planning staff. There's also a lot of great resources available online that you can refer to.
Any questions? No questions.
Tricia Alstott, members of the planning commission and members of the public. I'm Tricia Meyer.
Oh, I guess I need my microphone on first, sorry. For the record, I'm Tricia Meyer of the Ventura County Planning Division, and among other responsibilities in the Planning Division, I manage the county's condition compliance program. So, that's what brings me here this morning. I was asked to provide a short introduction to our condition compliance program, and then I'm going to do that. And then, I think what I'm going to do, or what I decided to do, was to just take you through a visual slideshow of how the condition compliance program works in practice through actual cases and some examples that I'll show you. So, let's see. The condition compliance program, the purpose of it is really to enforce the rules and regulations that are outlined in the county's non-coastal and coastal zoning ordinances, as well as any conditions of approval that are approved. So, this is really getting at the portion of the discretionary permitting process that Dan was talking about, where conditions of approval are approved by the decision-making body, and it's our responsibility to make sure that especially those that are operational that continue for the life of the project are being followed. And so, this is a little bit different from code compliance. We have a code compliance division here at the County of Ventura. They follow up on projects that, or sites really, that don't have a discretionary permit. So, that might be like single-family homes where there might be a violation, or illegal businesses that have come in without a permit. So, that's sort of their role, and they follow up on complaints that are received regarding those types of issues. And then, the condition compliance, the portion that we're responsible for in the Planning Division, is really more for those that are sites that have a discretionary permit that's active. So, that's kind of the difference between the two. The types of conditions that are enforced, they run the gamut. It really depends on the use, but we have everything. I mean, there are sort of standard conditions, like keeping the site, maintaining it in a clean and orderly fashion, hours of operation are sometimes on there, operating within the permit boundary. Sometimes, there's a requirement to install landscaping and to maintain it over time. So, there's all kinds of conditions depending on whether you're talking about, you know, an oil CUP. CUP just meaning condition of approval. I mean, a conditional use permit or different types. And actually, there are a lot of different types of land uses that are typically impacted. So, everything from, we have a lot of wireless facilities in the county, so we have a lot of wireless communication facilities. We have a lot of oil CUPs. We have conditional use permits that are approved for other types of uses, such as dog kennels, churches, private schools, recycling facilities. So, all of those are the types of permits that we would be reviewing through condition compliance and making sure that they're following their conditions of approval. Trying to think, oh, some ag-type uses. So, there are some greenhouse operations that require conditional use permits, and then, there are a lot of farmworker dwelling units in the county that require conditional use permits. So, those are the types of, those are the types of uses that are typically impacted by our condition compliance program. And then, it's our, we have the authority for enforcement of our conditions through the ordinance, through both the non-coastal and the coastal zoning ordinances. So, they allow us to pursue a violation if there are problems on a site and we're unable to get compliance. So, and we have sort of a process that we go through for that. So, these are the different types of compliance review. There's three different types listed up there. One of them is where it's more reactive. We're responding to a complaint that we receive from a citizen. So, we receive complaints, and they might, you know, they could be anything, and we go out and we investigate. Maybe there's a lot of dust that's appearing at a particular site, and so then, we go out and investigate that. And then, if we are to find violations there, then we basically seek abatement of any of those violations. The other type of compliance review is really just our standard compliance review. So, the code actually directs us to do a comprehensive compliance review on these sites every three years, or more frequently if required by the permit. And so, the goal is really for us to review permits every three years as staff time allows. And so, this is different than when a complaint comes in and someone says, oh, they're making too much noise at this particular location, or there's something going on that you need to investigate. This is really just us randomly choosing one of the conditional use permits or other permits that have been approved by the decision-making bodies, and going out and taking our site plan with us, the approved landscape plan, the conditions of approval for that project that were approved, and kind of walking through all of that and looking at the site and making sure that they're meeting all of those conditions. So, that's sort of our standard compliance review that's done. And that's apart from following up or investigating any complaints that come in and trying to figure out if there's actually a violation there or something that needs to be abated. And the complaints could be anything from, I think there's an illegal sign out there, or, you know, it could be a wedding venue, and it seems like they're operating outside of their hours of operation, or they're too loud. Might be a recycling facility, and they're piling things up too high, so we, you know, or open storage that someone doesn't like. So, we get all kinds of complaints that we follow up on. And then, the third type of compliance review is CEQA mitigation monitoring. So, the county is really charged with monitoring all of the, as Dan, you know, he really aptly described that whole process of reviewing new projects for CEQA purposes. And so, sometimes what happens is that there are mitigation measures that are applied to a particular project. And so, what we do as part, and those are usually incorporated into the conditions of approval, and so, what we do as part of our compliance review as well is to track those, because it's very important that we monitor those and we verify that those are being complied with. So, those are, you know, those are sort of serious things.
There's a question in the back.
I just have a question. If there's a CEQA document that has been prepared, not by your department, but say by the public works, what is your role then in that, in monitoring mitigation? Do you not have a role as staff?
We do not monitor CEQA mitigation for other agencies in the county, no.
I've got a question for Tricia. You talk about the goal, review permits every three years as staff time allows. We had a case where, a while back, where an applicant was saying that, well, it looked like to them that she would come, but she didn't, because apparently, staff time wasn't available. What does it say in the document about that, that they receive, that we will be there, or as staff time allows, or how does that part work?
You mean in the non-coastal zoning ordinance where it mentions that? It says no...
It was a conditional use permit.
Oh, a conditional, oh, it was a condition of approval? Are you familiar with that one, Kim?
I am familiar. The code calls out not once than...
It was five years on that.
Every three years. Right. But that was a particular condition of approval, which is a condition, and I've seen thousands of them, and I'd not seen that particular condition before. But the code requires, or suggests really, that we go out not once less than every three years. We didn't have the budget to do that. We didn't have the staff to do that until maybe four years ago. So, this is a program that Tricia's been working on, I think, for about three or four years, and we have a dedicated staff planner, Monica Sanoha down here, that does nothing but condition compliance. So, that was an unusual condition out of the thousands of conditions that we read, but that's not exactly what the code says.
I just want to elaborate on that. We actually have thousands of conditional use permits that are active, and we have one staff person full-time that is out there following up on condition compliance review for those, and then, one staff person who is available 30% of the time to assist with condition compliance review. So, it's really, I mean, three years is our goal, but three years is, you know, for all of those would be impossible. So, that's really where we're at. So...
Excuse me, Tricia. Once you've determined a violation, what's the procedure for enforcement or remediation? And what's the process? And what remedies do you have available to you, and what resources? I hear lots of complaints about violations existing, and nothing happened but a recording a notice of a violation, and nothing takes place. I hear this from people in adjacent properties complaining that the county doesn't act soon enough. Is there a process? I assume it depends on the health and safety issues involved, whether it's a priority or not.
Absolutely, and there is a process. I have, I actually included a slide at the very end, just in case that question was asked, but I hate to, if I move forward that many slides...
If I'm taking you out, pick it up later if you want to.
I'll be happy to do that, yeah. I'll do that. Thank you. So, just to give you a sense of the volume of work that we do in the condition compliance program, I just, I pulled some stats from 2011, and here you can see, we had 33 complaints that were submitted by citizens in 2011. 31 of those, we investigated. Two, we referred to other agencies and departments because they weren't, they didn't fall under our jurisdiction. Of those, and then, for compliance review during the same time period, the sort of what I was talking about with the standard compliance review, we had 54 compliance reviews that were completed in 2011, so on 54 different sites in the unincorporated areas. And then, as far as violations being opened, we had 28 violations that were opened, and that would have been a result of either a complaint that was investigated, or during the condition compliance review, sometimes our condition compliance officer finds violations on a site when she goes out to make her site visit. So, now, what I thought I'd do is I'd go ahead and walk you through a slideshow. I thought the best way to illustrate the program would be to show you before and after photos, and by...
Is your mic on?
It is on. You're not hearing me?
Do you have a little...
Okay. I'll try to speak loudly and clearly. I thought the best way to illustrate the program would be to show you before and after photos. Before simply means before compliance review or complaint investigation. So, what did the site look like before the complaint came in, or before our condition compliance officer went out there and did her compliance review? And one small disclaimer before I begin, I didn't actually take any of these photographs, nor did I make any of these site visits. Those are all, these are all the handiwork of our condition compliance officer, Monica Sanoha. So, if there are any questions later regarding specific sites, then she'll go ahead and answer those for you. And then, also, so as not to call anyone out, I'm not going to share the address or specific location of these sites, though some of you may recognize them in the photos. So, I'm going to go ahead and start with wireless communication facilities. We have a lot of these in the unincorporated areas. This one happens to be a faux palm tree. It was installed many years ago, and you can see the wear and tear from storms, and then, sun exposure, which is really obvious. This is actually a site that's visible from Highway 101, so it's a fairly, whoops, I guess that's not the right button. I was looking for my pointer here. Do you know where that is, Kim? I've never used this one. Is it here? Oh, there we go. Okay. And I don't know how to get rid of that. Okay, there we go. It disappeared. Okay. So, there's a lot, you know, over time with these, with these, whether you have a monopine or palm trees in these wireless facilities, you see that there's, you know, the sun bleaching that occurs. And, you know, if you were, you can't see it as well from the photograph, but to me, it almost looked like it was a strange thing. It looked like they hadn't watered the tree. And it's not a real tree, but it just, it looked like that over time. And so, when we did our compliance review, we went out there and... And so when we did our compliance review, we went out there and told them they needed to add palm fronds on that had been, you know, that had fallen off because of wind. And, and so this is, this was the result afterwards. And apparently, I'm told by the, the wireless companies that they now, that the synthetic materials that they have available to them now don't allow as much sun bleaching to occur. So hopefully, this one will last a little bit longer than the last one did. Oh, there we go. This is a equipment enclosure for a wireless communication facility, and you can see, I don't know if you can see it as well as from where you're sitting, but there's a lot of graffiti that's on there. Unfortunately, oh, there we go. Pointer's working. So there's a lot of graffiti that was on there when the site visit was made. This is actually, this is an antenna here, and then there's, there's a dish that's right there. So these enclosures are usually somewhere near the wireless communication facility. And so after we did the compliance review, this is what it looked like. So they went ahead and they repainted it, and the graffiti was gone. This is an oil CUP. So in this case, there were, there were, when our condition compliance officer went out to the site, she found that there was, there was actually on this particular site, I'm told, a lot of open storage all over the place, a lot of it unrelated or not related to the use that was out there. And so they were asked to remove that. And then as far as these, these oil tanks, which they said they were going to be using in the future, they were empty at the time, they went ahead and repainted them and made them, you know, so basically, they would fit in there. This is another oil site, and you can see that there's some significant leaking that was occurring here, off to the side of this wellhead, and, and then just basic lack of maintenance right here. And so this shows you sort of before and then after the compliance review. And also, I should add that I'm told that most of the time when we make site visits out to oil sites, they don't look like this. Most of the operators in Ventura County have, they run very clean sites, so this is sort of unusual.
These pictures bring up a question about the old Shell Chemical Plant. Is it operating under a CUP? Is there anything ever done there? I mean, it's a total disaster.
I'm not familiar with that site. I don't know if...
Are you talking about the Petrickham facility?
It's a Shell Chemical Plant on the end of the Ojai Freeway as you drive up to Ojai. It's a ten-site.
Right, yeah, that...
It's a hazard, you know, it's humbly and unattended, taken care of, covered with graffiti. It's a mess.
There are some plans in the works for that now that I'd be happy to chat with you about after the meeting. That there's some plans between the city and the county and a developer that's going on out there.
So this is another oil CUP site where you just, you see the graffiti and lack of maintenance. There's a lot of graffiti here. It just, you know, it seems like, a lot of these are in out-of-the-way locations, so they're kind of popular target sites. And this is after the condition compliance review. Now, we didn't know we'd be taking before and after photographs, or we would have stood in the same location for all of you, so, but this is, this is kind of as close as we could get. This is an ag use, so this is actually a site that has 15 acres of greenhouses, a warehouse, and an office use on the site. And what our condition compliance officer found out there was that they were stacking green waste on the front of their property right along Rice Road. This is what it looked like, I guess, the first time that she went out there, so it's stacked pretty high. And this type of green waste, which seems like it'd be, okay, maybe consistent with greenhouse type of use, but this actually requires separate permits from the fire department and environmental health division. So they regulate, you know, the height and then aisle widths between the green waste, and they want to make sure there's not going to be a fire out there. So it does require a permit. So the, the permittee was given the option of getting a permit or taking it away. And this is, so this is, they decided to remove it. So this is what it looked like afterwards. Now, moving on to some of the more commercial and industrial sites, this is a site that has an automobile repair yard. And there had been a condition of approval on the project some years back that was put on there, I believe, by the watershed protection district to stop some of the, or at least reduce the flow of pollutants from the site and not allow it to get into the storm water, storm drains. And so they had been required to put this, this grassy area here in some drainage basins, and they just had never done it. So you can see, this is actually, if you look here, this is the same wall right along here with the vegetation there, and then this is the, the gate. It's just open in this picture, and you see cars parked here, and here the gate's closed. And they've added hardscape that wasn't here, that was supposed to be there, and then they've added this here, and then a tree. So it looks quite different at the end after the condition compliance review was completed. This is a, a commercial site along Highway 33. There was an expired billboard on the site, and billboards like this are no longer allowed in the unincorporated areas, and so the applicant was unable to come in and renew the permit or even start a new permit to allow the billboard. And so they reluctantly agreed to remove it. My pointer's not, so, there we go. And so that's what it looked like afterwards, so. One less billboard on Highway 33. I don't know why I'm... Okay, so this is another, I believe this site is out in Saticoy. You can see there's a, a lack of site maintenance and excessive open storage, and we actually find this fairly frequently, so where areas that maybe were intended for parking or other uses on the site are being used to store all manner of abandoned vehicles and equipment. And so this, you know, you'll see in the next photograph, this is what it looked like. It's sort of overgrown with weeds and all kinds of things. And then this is what it looks like here. So let me go back for a moment and try and compare it for you. So here, do you see this sort of, this vine that's growing along this wall here and there? In the next photograph, you can see it. This, that's along here, here, and then back there. So now they're able to actually use that site for parking. This was a site that was, the original site plan and permit were approved in 1978, and there was a condition of approval that said that all outside storage areas were to be screened with solid fencing, and five feet of landscaping was to be provided along the exterior of fence and storage areas. And that was intended to provide screening from Crooked Palm Road and Highway 33. Not sure actually how visible it is from Highway 33. But when our condition compliance officer went out to the site, she found that maybe the vegetation had been put in in 1978, but it certainly wasn't there now. It was supposed to be right here, because you can see the road is right over there. And then there were all kinds of RVs and non-operable trucks and open storage on the site, which was required to be removed. And so this is what it looked like afterwards. So you'll see that they've put in, they've screened off, they took that chain link fence, and they added some screening there, and then they also added the vegetation that was required along the road to screen the, the open storage. And of course, they were allowed to keep trucks and equipment that were related to their actual use, they just couldn't keep everything else that was on the site. This, this was actually a complaint-based review, so someone complained about this shopping center, and there were some unpermitted storage that was located back behind it. And so this is what it looked like before, and this is what it looked like afterward. This is a site, and I just have a couple more. So this is a site where there was some open storage that was, or not really open storage, but this, essentially what happens is that the permit boundary is going to stop at the property line. It doesn't go into the public right-of-way. And so when the condition compliance officer went out there, she found that there was a dumpster out here that was being, being used by one of the tenants of the site, a roofing company, to, you know, throw roofing materials in it, which, you know, this dumpster would be fine if it was on the site, since that's where the use was, but not out in the public right-of-way, not for months and months, which was what the, what the complaint alleged. And then there was an RV on, on the, in the public right-of-way that didn't have a license and was inoperable and owned by the property owner. So the condition compliance officer worked with our encroachment division in the county to ha, and then also with the property owner to have those removed. And so this is what it looked like afterwards, but looking from the other direction. And, so you can see now, this, this can be used for parking instead of having the dumpster there and the old RV. This was actually around the corner on the same property, so you can see that there's a lack of site maintenance here. There were also trees that were required to be planted as part of the approved landscape plan that were missing. So this is what it looked like before, and then, this is what it looked like afterward. So, before, afterward, the, there's a big change there. So let me go ahead, I had, like I said at the end here. So this is to answer your question on our process when we find violations. Some violations are very easily remedied. If you, if they've got open storage, for instance, that they need to remove off the property, you know, a lot of times they're very, very accommodating and they'll take that off, or maybe they just need to get a zoning clearance for an illegal sign that they can come and, and get over the counter. Other violations require them to come in and initiate a modification process, you know, a, a separate discretionary permit in order to abate the violation. And so that could, that could take much longer. And so our process is that if we find a violation out on the site that can be, you know, quickly corrected, then we ask them to do so. And we give them, you know, we give them a little bit of time to do that. If it seems like something that's going to, that's going to take a much longer effort or there's resistance, then we have the ability to issue a notice of violation, which is what we do. And when we issue the notice of violation, we give them 30 days to abate the violation or to come in. The 30 days would also be good if they have to do a whole discretionary permit process to come in and initiate that process within the 30 days. So they needed to submit something, they could submit it. If that hasn't happened within 30 days, then we issue a notice of noncompliance. And the notice of noncompliance is what's recorded against the property in the recorder's office. And so that notice of noncompliance prevents someone from being able to refinance their property. They wouldn't, you know, that's something that would show up in a title report if they were trying to sell the property. So the notice of compliance is something that's meant to get their attention. After the notice of noncompliance, and again, each of these has a long, you know, it comes with a, it's a notice and explains exactly what the violation is and how they're supposed to abate it. And if nothing happens after issuing the notice of noncompliance, then we give them another 30 days and we can issue a notice of impending civil administrative penalties. And that only applies to our noncoastal areas. We don't have a civil administrative penalties ordinance for a coastal zone, but most of the review that we do is in the noncoastal zone. I mean, that's the bulk of the county anyway, there's just a small portion. There's not, there's not nearly as many CUPs and other sites that we're investigating that are along the coastal zone. So most of the time, the civil administrative penalties would be our, that would be our method of enforcing that the violations are corrected. And so we issue a notice of impending civil administrative penalties. And for each violation that's found on the site, they can have a penalty that's up to $1,000 per day that starts to add up. Now, the reality is, let's say you have an RV out there that's abandoned that you're supposed to move, it's not going to be $1,000 a day. Most, most violations aren't going to be that costly. But let's say you have a series of five or six violations, and each of them's $150, then as a daily fine, that's really going to add up very quickly. And so usually, we find that once we've issued the notice of impending civil administrative penalties, that gets, that, that gets their attention. They don't want to be paying a daily fine for these violations, and so then they're usually moving quicker to try and abate the violations. If there's no movement, and really, they're just disregarding the notice, then after another 30 days, we, we can issue the notice of imposition. Basically, after 30 days, we basically start collect, that's when the, the clock starts ticking for that fine to be collected. So, and they can come in and they can request a stay of the civil penalties if they have, you know, if they can show a good faith effort towards moving forward and they're working on it. And then we'll stay the penalties, you know, and the planning director reviews those requests. Or, you know, the clock keeps ticking, and then we'll have to collect all of those fees. So we find, though, when you're talking about, I mean, it's a different world if you've got something that's an illegal use that doesn't have a discretionary permit at all, and something that has a discretionary permit. Because if you have a discretionary permit, you don't want it to be revoked or taken away or changed significantly, and so you're much more likely to comply with the requirements and to abate the violations without getting all the way down to the imposition of civil administrative penalties. That may not be the case for sites that are being investigated by the code compliance division, for those cases that don't have a discretionary permit, because they don't have as much to lose. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So we don't find, I mean, it's very rare that one of our cases will get all the way down to the civil administrative penalties level. That's just rare. Doesn't happen that often.
When you say rare, how, how many last year?
In the last three years, I've, I only recall maybe three.
Do you recover the, the staff time? Do you recover compensation for staff time as part of the penalties?
Well, not the penalties themselves, but we do charge all staff time to the violation. So we, when we open up a notice of violation, we have immediately at our disposal, based on the, the noncoastal zoning ordinance, we have a way of charging for all staff time required to, to abate that violation.
Okay. Who fixes that? Who, who fixes the amount of the, the penalty that you're assessing, and who fixes the amount of staff time or the hourly rates or however you do that?
The hourly rates, hourly rates for staff time are set by the board of supervisors when they approve our fee schedule each year.
So for each individual or groups, there's a hourly rate or something?
Yes.
And that's set by the board annually?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Uh huh. The civil administrative penalties, we have guidelines that were approved by the board of supervisors that direct us on how to determine the fee. So there's a worksheet that we complete, and depending on whether it's a public health and safety issue, you know, there's, there's basically a rating that we go through with each violation in order to determine what the fee will be at the end.
Okay.
It's a detailed worksheet.
Tricia, if you could just, how long have these administrative penalties been in effect?
When did we adopt that ordinance? Do you remember, Robert?
Five years.
About five years?
The reason I bring that up is that was one of the things that this particular body discovered a number of years ago, that we were limited in what we could and could not other than just canceling a conditional use permit. So the supervisors were fortunate enough, took it up, legal counsel prepared, and then allowed that set of teeth to be put in place. So it's been very recent.
Dan here?
Tricia, I'm Lynn Jensen, I'm from Ventura County, Colorado. My question is, is there any point where your condition compliance would move to code enforcement, or are you guys completely separate?
So that's, okay. Let me repeat the question from Lynn Jensen. She asks whether there's any point that our process, when we're following up on a violation or complaint, would move over to the code compliance division or if we just continue with it. Sometimes, I mean, there are some cases where we work together on a case. So because there, the code compliance division is, they're investigating not just issues that are related to, you know, non-discretionary permits, but also building and safety code issues. So there are some cases where there are building and safety code issues that are running parallel to the planning division and code compliance issues. So sometimes we, we'll, we will do dual site visits and investigations into a complaint. Other times, what happens is there's, there's a situation where a complaint comes into one department, but it actually belongs to the other, and so then we would refer it on to them. And we might have to do a certain amount of investigation ourselves before we realize that, because we have to figure out whether the, whether the use is something that falls under our jurisdiction and whether it's a, an active conditional use permit or not, or planned development permit. And so there's, there's some investigation, it's not immediately apparent, then we have to do some research to figure that out.
So if it's a conditional use permit and you would use a modification in order to include whatever use they have that they're not doing, you would keep it in planning?
Yes.
But if you had no permit at all, when would it end up going to code?
Right, so let me repeat that again for the record. She said, so if you have a use that's operating that requires a modification to continue, then we, would we keep that in planning as opposed to sending that over to co-compliance, which would handle something that never had a permit to begin with? And the answer is yes, we would. Uh huh.
Tricia, just a follow-up to an earlier question related to notice of noncompliance. You mentioned at some point that a letter is, if there's still no compliance, a letter is recorded against the title or the property.
Yes.
Does that preclude that property from being sold, or does that just put the prospective buyer on notice that they might be transacting a noncompliant property?
Yeah, it puts the prospective buyer on notice, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions? I think we'll take a five-minute break. Madam Director?
Thank you very much. All right, we're ready, ready to get started. These other items on four and five legal matters for the Ventura County Planning Commission, including the roles and responsibility of the MACS and the California Environmental Quality Act. We have our county council to the planning commission and to the planning department, We have our county council to the planning commission and to the planning department, Robert Quong here to present on this. And I just want to say, starting out, that, you know, Robert is, is a great attorney. He lectures on land use. He's just indispensable to us in the planning department. We call him every day. He is on speed dial in my office and he's a very good lecturer. And so we're in for a little bit of a treat.
Thank you, Kim. Again, my name is Robert Quong. I'm assistant county council. And one of my primary assignments in the county council's office is to advise Kim and her fine staff. And you got a taste of that just from the presentations from Dan and from Tricia. And I know that Rosemary afterwards will, will do the same thing as far as a presentation and the information that they, the fine work that they do for the county here. So my presentation is on legal matters for the Ventura County Planning Commission. And you are my primary audience for this presentation. And the MACS, I don't want to slide you in any way. There are a couple of slides in there. But I do want to say that what I, what I am going to tell or explain to the planning commission applies to some degree and maybe to a very great degree to what you do in your municipal advisory council meetings. So I would pay particular attention to those things and I will call them out in the course of my presentation here. And there's a little pun in that title, "Legal Matters for Ventura County Planning Commission." There are legal matters that come before you because that's what they are. They are entitlements. They are maps. They are issues of legality and whether or not they should be issued or not, or revoked or not. But it's also that legal matters because you are a body created by state law. You are out of the government code and you are out of board of supervisor ordinance. And so you are a creature of law. So it's vitally important that you understand the origin of your existence as well as the basis for your authority and the limits to your authority on top of that. So with all that being said, let's move right into it. There are some major topics that I like to cover. And the first one will be legal scope and activity, which I just spoke about. Due process requirements in land use hearings. The Brown Act open meetings law, which is always a fun topic because it deals with how you do what you do. The Ventura County Board of Supervisors resolution, which is now found in rule number 40 in the county's administrative policy manual. And that is the board of supervisors' specific guidance to the planning commission and to itself about how they are to conduct land use hearings. Talk a little bit about California conflict of interest laws. I'm not going to go into great detail on this. But in accordance with AB 1234, there is a requirement that conflict of interest training be done on a biannual or every two-year basis for appointees to boards and commissions to understand the obligations under the Fair Political Practices Act. Legal scope and activity. First two things, understanding your role. The first one is a quasi-judicial body. And as a quasi-judicial body, you are to adjudicate, basically to judge the rights of those who appear before you. And your actions are bound by the law and to observe certain forms and hold public hearings. Quasi, it's basically like a trial. You are here to judge the facts and apply the law to the facts. And that is in a quasi-judicial role. And in order to do that well, you need to understand who it is who is coming before you, the evidence that is being presented for you, and how that process is to work. And to ensure that that hearing is done in a fair and judicious manner. The second role that you have is a quasi-legislative role. And that's where you, as a body, oftentimes engage in rulemaking, determining zoning ordinance text amendments or zoning ordinance amendments. And it's all provided for you within the noncoastal zoning ordinance as well as the coastal zoning ordinance. So understanding that those are your two basic roles. Now, as far as the MACS go, you have neither one of these roles, but you're not shut out of this entire process. As your name suggests, you are advisory. And as an advisory body, you neither have the ability to say yes or no to a project. You can advise the ultimate decision maker about a yes or no, or whether or not this is a good legislative policy, such as amending the code or amending the general plan or the area plan. You can say that this is what we think and this is what we think would be better and things of that nature. That's all advisory, but is not as a complete of an authority as granted to the planning commission by law in the, in the judicial and the legislative sense. That is reserved for the planning commission as well as for the board of supervisors as the key decision-making bodies in the county. And not to forget, the planning director also has certain types of quasi-judicial Due process requirements in land use hearings. This is a subject that's very near and dear to my heart. Because again, what are we talking about here when we talk about legal matters for the planning commission? We're talking about good government. And good government really is a, a process of the integrity of the people who sit in those seats that you're occupying right now. And if government is to be understood as meeting the needs of its, of the, of the public and in doing things that are for the public health, safety and welfare, there has to be certain due process requirements as we know from just reading the United States Constitution. And, and this is where it all comes from. And all of those due process rights, how we do what we do in a way to show fair hearing and fair process is vitally important to make sure that the land use decisions that come out of your body, or in any type of body that has authority, is seen with some credibility, has integrity, and it has the force of law behind it. Citizens of the state are entitled to due process before government or governmental agencies, especially in the situations where there might be a potential deprivation of that citizen's life, liberty or property. And again, that comes right out of the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution. And flowing from that very basic law comes these procedural as well as substantive due process requirements. Due process requires notice of intended action. You heard a lot about that today. We give notice about what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. That's to put people on notice so they have an opportunity to prepare for something. And they have an opportunity to prepare for whether it's a CUP approval, denial, modification. They have time to do that. Again, fairness says you don't drop it upon them at the 11th hour. By the way, the hearing is tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. Be there or you'll lose your entitlement. It's not that type of way. And so all of these laws about 10-day notice, 30-day notice, all of these different notice requirements prior to the final action are meant to provide this opportunity to prepare. Opportunity to be heard. And this is very important. This is where the Brown Act comes in and this is also where, you know, Robert's Rules of Order. I would like to take ownership of the authorship of the Robert's Rules of Order, but I can't. But oftentimes to unsuspecting audiences, I do tell them that I have written Robert's Rules of Orders. But that whole idea is to give people a very orderly, structured way of getting their point across. And people have time at the podium, they're given an opportunity, the other side gets an opportunity to be heard as well. All of this is designed to have a structured way of public dialogue and some civility in the process. Fair process or a fair and impartial hearing. And this goes to the decision makers themselves and what mentality as well as what understanding they bring to the process. It is a process of being a neutral decision-making body, not to take decisions or positions adverse or pro to any given side on any matter that comes before you. And is to really think and hear as an impartial hearing body on that matter. And we'll talk more about what that means. And finally, it's a public hearing. These are hearings that are not held in the middle of the night without notice to the general public who want to know about it. It is to be done with the full light of day so that there is, as a popular term is today, transparency in the decision-making process. More on due process, land use hearings and the fair process. There's a public expectation that the planning commission will be impartial to avoid favoritism. There's an, there's an understanding and expectation that you keep an open mind, that you do not form or express an opinion about an adjudicatory matter coming before you until after you have heard all the evidence. And this is a small little matter, but oftentimes I've noticed boards do this. They'll close the public hearing and then every one of the decision makers will then, without a motion being on the table, express their opinion. Strict Robert's Rules of Orders would be that there has to be a motion pending before a discussion to even begin. And actually commenting before a motion is made is, in a way, an expression of an opinion before everything has been heard. That's a small technical matter. I mean, it's a technical matter, but I think it's worth noting that in this case, to keep an open mind after a motion has been made. In other words, what are you, what are you basing, what's the decision or your discussion on if there's not a decision to be put before you? So, small technical matter, but I think it's worth noting and keeping an open mind there. As a public official, you have the implied duty to serve with zeal, skill and diligence, which is exactly why that you were all appointed to the position that you have, because you have demonstrated all of those characteristics. And again, public health, safety and welfare is the overarching goal of the planning commissioner in this case. Avoid ex parte contacts. Again, we'll talk more about what that is. Ex parte contacts is contacts with parties outside of the hearing process on a one-to-one basis, done without public notice, without public hearing, without opportunity to be heard. Those are ex parte contacts. And we'll talk more about that here. And finally, to avoid factual bias and to avoid people bias. All decisions are merit-based and oftentimes we're human. We, we oftentimes look at the person rather than the message or the project. And there is an expectation that we avoid those last three things there because those are perceptions or appearances of impropriety or bias which then cause the, the due process or the fair process of these hearings to be called into question. And one of the, the greatest criticisms of hearings of any sort is that I didn't get a fair shake. And what do they mean by that? What they mean by that is that they sense that there is a bias in either facts or people or with the, the, the perception or the speculation that there might be ex parte contacts. So in order to stay above that and to maintain the integrity of the process, you want to avoid those three. Question?
If the question on the, avoid the party contacts, that doesn't include site visits to a project, right? I mean, if you're going out to a site to look at the site or, you know, pre, pre-meeting, you know, that's, that's okay.
That, that, you know, Kim and I talked about this before we held it. The question is, does the ex parte context preclude site visitation? And that goes to the heart of a couple of slides later on in my presentation. So I'll come back to your question and discuss that in greater detail. Because the board of supervisors since 1975 has had a policy in place dealing exactly with what you're talking about, sir. Okay, let's, let's move into the Brown Act open meeting laws. The Brown Act open meeting laws, really a landmark law in California on open government. And it is worth noting that it is the father of our current governor who is responsible for this law, which bears his name and which bears his trademark on California. And know that this law has had huge impact across the United States and many states pattern their own open meetings laws on this very law here. The open meeting requirement provides legal minimums, and again, that's legal minimums, to ensure public is fully informed in local decisions. Dan Clement mentioned that CEQA's, one of its main goals was public information. Well, Brown Act is the same way. It's that the public understands its democratic role and can participate in democratic processes. And to do that, there's the Brown Act open meeting law. It facilitates public participation, curbs the misuse of the democratic process. In other words, meetings have to be notified, there has to be a real agenda, you have to talk about only things that are on the agenda. These are things to curb any misuse of a democratic process. What is a meeting? It's any situation involving a majority of decision-making body, in this case, the five of you here in the planning commission, in which business is transacted or discussed whether by telephone, email, or at a coffee shop. So this morning, as I was coming down for the little meet and greet outside with the pastries and coffee, I stood next to three planning commissioners. Because what does three out of five mean? It means a quorum. And was there a meeting going on? And certainly because they're well-trained and because they're smart, they were only talking about sports and their children and things of that nature, certainly was not a situation that called into question business or things that were being transacted. And there is obviously exceptions for social gatherings and things of that nature. So if the five of you were to go to Mr. So-and-so's retirement party, that would be fine. It'd be another thing altogether if all of you stood in a corner and said, hey, what do you think about Project X? You know what I mean? Serial meetings. I'm often asked, what is a serial meeting? And the easiest way to explain that is there is a series of communications by any means, by letter, by email, by telephone tree, that results in a majority of that decision-making body conferring on an issue. And that's kind of a roundabout way, as you can already tell, about getting around the public open meeting aspect of the Brown Act. And this would, this could happen in a very innocuous sense. There is a staff member who calls up Commissioner A and says, Commissioner A, I just need some information from you. Oh, and by the way, did you know that Commissioner B thinks the same thing you do? Is there a serial meeting yet? No. However, a serial meeting happens when that staff member calls up Commissioner C and says, thank you very much, Commissioner C, for that information. Oh, by the way, did you know that Commissioners A and B believe the same thing you do on that issue? Bingo. That's a serial meeting. Because by the interaction of that person who's a staff member, and again, I'm just using, this is an example, I'm not saying staff members do this at all, but that there is now a communication created between those four people that create that serial meeting and create a consensus of idea. And that is disallowed by the Brown Act. There is an agenda posting requirement. Again, we, the, the decision-making body may not act or discuss items that are not on the agenda. And that's why the agenda is important about what it says, the specificity of it and how it is put together. Now, it would take an entire day to talk about the complexities of the Brown Act and the consequences of violating it. And so it's important that there is legal counsel. And one of my primary roles is to make sure that the Brown Act is understood and abided by in your open meetings questions. I'm going to get to the situation about the municipal advisory commissions being subject to the Brown Act. And I'll just give you a heads up. Yes. Okay. Brown Act open meetings law. Okay, let's move on. All right, now we move to the board of supervisors themselves. And they have adopted this resolution, and again, it's dated since 1976, excuse me, I said 75, that sets forth procedures about how they, you are to conduct these hearings. And this flows directly from the government code 65804, minimum procedural standards that the city and county zoning hearings should be done. And this is allowed by law and that's exactly the legislative basis for the board moving in that way. And that resolution has remained unchanged since 1976, but that may be about to change. The resolution itself is designed to govern those due process issues and also to make your decision as legally defensible as possible. And how does it do that? Well, it does that by following some very specific case law that there is a need to bridge the analytical gap between raw evidence and the ultimate decision. And that that analytical route be clearly understood from evidence to action. That's case law. And how you do your decision-making process is designed to do that very same thing, is to bring people from raw evidence to ultimate decision. How did you get from this point to your final decision? And that has to be well explained and that's part of your administrative record. And that's why you take pains to make sure that the record is clear about what exhibits are in the record, what evidence you've received and on what basis did you make that decision? And is it reflected in the record so that everybody, opponents and proponents, understand how you got there? And that's a, that's a famous case, the Topanga Association for Cine Community case out of LA County, which even predates this resolution from the board. The Code of Civil Procedures, this is a writ action. This is what happens when a decision of yours gets challenged, okay? And so this is what the courts are going to look at, at your decision to determine if what you did or did not do is okay. And this, this law or this code section as defined by case law basically says that the courts are going to look at this. When they look at your decision, well, they say, was there a fair trial? Whether there was a prejudicial abuse of discretion? Was there any, and abuse of discretion is, is shown if the respondent, in this case, the planning commission of the county, did something within the law or outside of law and whether those decisions are supported by findings and whether the findings are supported by evidence. So you have two things here. One, your action itself, the findings that reflect that action, and then the evidence that support those findings, all of which you'll find in the carefully-prepared planning commission staff reports that staff put together. That really is supposed to be a roadmap of how you get from one set of facts to the decision there and the recommendations that are related to that. But that's exactly the standard of review that courts will look at if, in fact, your decision is being challenged. And that's a case out of City of Torrance, and those are your citations there. And it's a fairly recent case, but this reflects, you know, decades and decades of, of similar land use litigation. Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Excuse me. So that a, am I correct in an, in an appeal made by someone on a planning commission decision is based under this parameter? That would go to the board, obviously, on appeal?
Okay. The question is, on appeal, if there's a decision made by your board, and this is again, going with Dan's presentation on your hearings, if there is an appeal made within 10 days of your decision, it goes to the board of supervisors. And in that administrative hearing sense, what they do is they're not only acting on an an appeal, but they also have a, what is called de novo hearing. It's a hearing that is starting from ground zero all the way back up. So they have to hear all the facts, make all the same findings that you had made in your prior decision. So in a sense, the Board Supervisor replaces your decision in some way, shape, or form, or has the potential to replace your decision in some way, shape, or form. Their decision would also be judged by this same standard if it was challenged in a court of law? Yes, Commissioner Osnan?
Robert, what's the burden of proof? What level?
It's a substantial evidence burden of proof in this case.
Just substantial evidence.
Right. And again, they're looking, when you see abusive discretion there, they're oftentimes looking at arbitrary and capricious activity of the administrative agency. It does not get to an independent review just yet. There, again, still, on these writ matters, there is a deference to the findings that were made by the administrative hearing. So again, it's a substantial evidence-based decision. That's why findings are so important. That's why getting information in the record is so important. Okay, findings, okay, just break it down a little bit further here. Findings must be made by quasi-judicial body as part of determination to grant, grant with modifications or deny a CUP. So again, findings are necessary. Findings have to be supported by substantial evidence. Trial and appellate court review and scrutiny is based on that body of evidence. So it's, again, important to maintain, what is that? And is there something outside of that that you relied upon? And if you did, then this basis of substantial evidence is kind of basically shot through because you may have made a decision on something other than what was before you at the time. Therefore, it's crucial that, and I'll get to that question, that the CUP decision be made on the evidence clearly, fully, and publicly disclosed and contained in the administrative record. And I cannot emphasize that enough. Now, going to that question over there.
Now, the MACs do not have to make any findings with their recommendations, with their vote. So that's a big difference, right?
Is that a statement or a question?
Well, it's a question, and I just want to compare the types of things.
There is no legal requirement, okay, the question is, do MACs have to make findings for their recommendations? And each MAC has the ability to create its own bylaws about how they're going to do, what they're going to do. There's general authority given to MACs under the Government Code section, which I'll talk about. But there's nothing in there because your decisions are only advisory, that you have to have findings for them. But let's say you say there's a project that comes before you and the MAC says, no. Period. Is there anything else you want to say? No. Period. If that's your finding, if that's your recommendation without explanation, that is a question in trial court, whether there's admissibility of that or the weight of the evidence. And the weight of the evidence would be highly questionable because there is no rationale or reason for that decision other than no. Period. So, going back to the question, does a MAC have to have findings? Well, it's advisable. And again, I advise Kim and the Planning Commission, I don't advise the MACs. It's a question of how much the MAC wants to be seen as having some basis in fact for their decision. It goes, again, to your legitimacy, your integrity, and your credibility. And so, again, think of somebody who says to you with just a flat-out yes or no answer to a question that may result in some sort of discretion or judicial thinking, you know? That's not going to sit well with you. You want reasons. Okay? Back there.
You said you don't advise the MACs. Does that mean if an individual MAC member has a question that they feel would probably be best answered by yourself, they can't contact you?
That is not the way that we would prefer that legal counsel be involved in any matter of a land use nature. I think the primary point of contact is the supervisory aid that is assigned to your MAC, and that question should be directed to the supervisory aid. Then the aid probably is in the best position to go through the county family. The answer could be answered by Dan Clement, who you already saw is very well-versed in many of these questions and, you know, would confer a legal degree on him, but I don't have the power to do so. And then if, in fact, Kim and her staff believe that it's a matter beyond their pay grade, then it will come up, they can decide if county council needs to be involved. But that's probably the way that it should be handled. Question here?
Yeah. In the normal process of our MAC, we'll have a project there and they'll present it. And we'll say, you know, it looks good, except don't like this, this, and this. And then that goes in as a recommendation from us, and that's a good process. It goes up to the Planning Commission that way, is that, you know, we approve it based on these recommendations.
And that's fine. I mean, these are things that, again, go to the weight of your recommendation. And again, planning staff, professional planning, with the understanding of the code, will take that into consideration.
Robert?
Yes.
In terms of making a record, obviously, we have staff materials that have been presented. Obviously, things will be presented to Danielle the day of. And then, as a practical procedural matter, do we mark, how do you mark it for ID and then move it into the record? What are you supposed to do to keep the record clean? How procedurally should I do that?
Yeah. Procedurally, I think, you know, I mean, having done some trial work, I think it's always good to mark an evidence first before it's, and then discuss it. And so we all can refer to it as a particular exhibit, and then after...
So mark for ID purpose?
Yeah, mark it for ID purpose and then move it into evidence or move it into the record just prior to your decision.
At that point in time or at...
You could do it at that point in time with the concurrence of the full commission, or you could do it just before you go into your decision-making mode when you close the public hearing. Because, let's say somebody, Exhibit A comes under a great deal of scrutiny. Let's say opposing side says, well, Exhibit A is a fraud, then do you really want to move it to evidence as soon as you market? You know, it's got to be tested in a way sometimes. Again, I can't imagine that being happening in a Planning Commission hearing. But again, in contested matters, you know, it's an open competition there.
Okay.
All right. Let's go into deeper into that resolution. And this is about information obtained outside the public hearing. This goes directly to your question about ex parte hearings. And this is what the Board of Supervisors has stated since 1976, and which Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors has more or less abided by for all these years. No member of the hearing body, in this case, Planning Commission or Board of Supervisors, shall solicit or receive evidence. So this is proactive as well as receiving. Outside of a public hearing, on a matter for which the public hearing is required, okay, so this is pending before them. That's what they shall not do. They are not supposed to receive. So there are two responsibilities based on this. There's a negative and there's a positive responsibility. The negative responsibility is that you shall avoid those personal contacts of receiving that information outside of a hearing. Avoid personal contacts, correspondence, and telephone calls. Now, this is kind of getting a little bit beyond the pale. In 1976, I don't believe that there were cell phones really available to many people. And I don't think we had email. And we don't have many of the conveniences of the instant digital communication that we have nowadays. So it's almost impossible for someone to avoid being contacted in some way, shape, or form. But that's still what it says, to avoid that concerning substantive issues on the agenda outside of a public hearing. That is the negative responsibility, the responsibility of avoidance. What's the positive responsibility? Positive responsibility is if you do receive that information or correspondence or contact, you'll inform the person contacting you to make that information their objections, their concerns, their issues, their problems at the public hearing. This goes back again, that's why the public hearing is so important. That's why we have time set aside for public comment, for people to come up to the dais and explain themselves. This is where it is, so that everybody who's interested about the action, the applicant, the opponents, the proponents, and especially the decision-makers, know that information. In the first situation, then it would only be one information to, let's say, Commissioner A. Only Commissioner A receives that contact. Well, Commissioner A should be thinking, well, if it's important to me, shouldn't it be important to B, C, D, and E as well? And the question is yes, because they make a group decision, not just individual decisions. Question?
On a MAC issue, you know, frequently we'll get contact from members of the public by email, by Starbucks. And so, you know, generally, you know, you listen to what they have to say, and normally would evade that in a hearing, through communication. But I mean, is that okay in that scenario? I mean, if they're coming in, if there's an issue, it could be, maybe it's a cell tower issue, maybe something else, they're conveying their opinion, which you want to know what the community is thinking, but it's not at the hearing, although, you know, it is brought up at the hearing.
Okay. So the question is, I receive information outside of the hearing when I'm ordering my double-shot latte or whatever the case is, and what do I do with that information? It could be in oral communication, it could also be by email. I think that in the email situation, you may want to print that out and put it into the record. In the oral sense, you need to convey that information at the hearing. Well, let's get to this a little bit further. Any member of a hearing body who has received evidence outside the public hearing, exactly what you're talking about, viewed the subject property, this goes to your question of visitation. So let's say I live across the street from it, I see it every day. Well, you know, that's something that we should know about. Is familiar with the subject property? This is what you shall do. You'll disclose it at the hearing, exactly what I just said. You'll disclose the evidence, your observations, you're familiar with the property. Okay? Let's go back to that again. All right. You receive the information, disclosure is the key thing here. And this takes it away from the situation of private information and private contacts that no one else is aware of except you. All right? And that's, disclosure is a key thing. Commissioner Duquesne?
Following up on that, on something that you said, and I don't know if you were facetious, but if you do live across the street...
I could be.
If you do live across the street from that cell tower, do you want to clarify what you should do in a situation where you are...
Oftentimes, okay, the question is, if I live across the street from the cell tower, or if I can't escape seeing it on my way to work, and I know many of the commissioners have a huge amount of history in this county and know it very well, from back roads to side roads and things of that nature, expressing that familiarity is sufficient. Or if, in fact, you live exactly across the street from it, I think that that is a fact of the project proponent would like to know. And that is relevant information, just think of it that way. If you were making that application and you knew that the decision-maker actually lives near it, around it, or may be impacted by it in some way, shape, or form, that's important for parties who come before you to know about so that they can address those specifically.
Would there be necessarily a conflict of interest if you were a decision-making body and you lived across the street from whatever it was?
Okay, now we're getting into conflict of interest. And the question is, if I lived across the street from, let's say, Facility X that's being proposed, is that a potential conflict of interest? There is a potential for that. And the conflict of interest code sections, you thought the Brown Act or CEQA or permit processing was complex, that makes that look like kindergarten material, the Fair Political Practices Act. And so, in terms of representation, again, I do not represent individual commissioners in your private capacities, but as a board, I advise you. So the short answer is, you should seek, if in fact that is the case, individual legal authority. Now, I have advised other boards where I was asked to put together a letter before any matter came before them, expressing, okay, this is the general lay of the land, and if you have any relationship to it, please let me know about it. So it was kind of a prophylactic letter in that sense to try to get it out to them, saying, hey, let me know sooner than later, and so let's just avoid any embarrassment in the future type of thing. But that's not how we work in this county. And that type of understanding of your individual situation, a conflict of interest, is really something that's you as an individual need to grapple with, and the law is there. But I'll get to that in the last slide.
Robert, can I ask one question?
Yes. Ms. Jensen?
I'm sorry. One thing I'm concerned about is the limitation on time on an applicant. You say it's supposed to be a fair hearing, whereas staff is allowed to take as much time as they like, they generally use slideshows. And they've already generally determined their opinion on a project because they support or deny the project, recommendation to the Planning Commission. And then the applicant comes in and they have a particular time limit that they're allowed to work within. I'm wondering how that works as far as whether it would be a fair hearing based on them having a limited time or...
The question is, how much time does an applicant have before the decision-making body? And there's no set law saying that an applicant shall only have 12 minutes and can only divide them amongst two speakers. It's not that specific. There are guidelines within the resolution that we're referring to here about that. But really, it's a matter for the chair of the commission to do so. And we've had very long meetings in the community, and I'm thinking of one out in Simi Valley, where we allowed hours of testimony by the permanent applicant. And so it all depends on the situation. And I would not go so far as say, where does fairness fit into that? Because there are cases that simply say, hey, if there are time limits and the board was trying to do that and gave that person that time limit, that was sufficient for a fair hearing. Now, obviously, every case is different, again. And so, like I said at the beginning of my disclaimer, and I'm glad I'm going back to that now, every case is different. And so what I say here is not really applicable across the board, it has to be that way.
Mr. Huang, if I just may, just to answer your question, I've sat up here almost 19 years. The applicant is given as much time as they need to present their case. The only time that we have viewed in limiting testimony is when there were so many people present that to give everybody an unlimited timeframe, we could not hear all of the testimony from the public. So that is the only time we've done that. And even in those situations where you have 100 people, even giving them five minutes, we've carried it over to a second day. Number two, the applicant or whatever the situation is, always has the right of an unlimited rebuttal to whatever testimony and evidence has been presented. That has been the policy and procedure that this commission has followed. We have never been directed by either the Board of Supervisors, county council, to limit the applicant in any fashion, either in their initial presentation or the rebuttal.
So the case I'm thinking of was actually at the Board of Supervisors, so perhaps they have a different...
I'm just telling you what the policy has been of this body.
Commissioner Duquesne has a comment?
Let me think before I jump in here.
All right. All right, let me move on to the next slide. The question is, how much disclosure is this? And again, this goes back to that last slide. Make it known, but how much should I make it known? Do all I have to say is, yeah, I got a phone call from somebody who's interested? Or do I need to say, I got a phone call from Mr. Smith about X, Y, and Z? The degree of disclosure is governed by the fact that there are interested persons. And the degree of disclosure should be so that all interested parties may be aware of the information or evidence that the board member is relying upon. So if I'm relying upon a five-page letter, then I need to say, this is a five-page letter, and not just simply say it's a letter I received. And that that disclosure have an opportunity to respond to each information, evidence, or familiarity. All right? So if I'm an interested party, I need to know what you received and then have an opportunity to respond to it. So if I know that you received that five-page letter, well, I have a 17-page letter that rebutts everything in that five-page letter, and I should have that opportunity to know about that. How does my use of obtaining evidence or information outside the public hearing affect the fairness of the public hearing on the subject matter? In the seminal case of Safeway versus City of Burlingame, council members went out and viewed the property, took evidence at the property site, and spoke to the proponents of the project, and walked the site, but never disclosed that they did that before they made a decision in favor of the project proponent. And the court in that case very clearly said, was there a fair hearing? And they said, certainly not. And the whole idea of American fair play was impugned by that action by the City of Burlingame. We won't talk about the City of Burlingame and those council members, but they are forever emblazoned in California law as having that decision, that they did not act in a fair and proper way. So your receipt of information is of great value and of great importance because it impunes the whole process when information is relied upon but is not disclosed and not made known to those people who might be interested in the project, pro or against. All right, now field investigations. This goes back to one of our favorite subjects of, can we go out and visit the site? Hearing body... Hearing body may take field trips to view the property for other purposes relevant to the hearing, and we've done that in, in the Simi Valley landfill situation. Field trips are part of a regular meeting, this is a noticed Brown Act meeting, okay? If you're going to go out together, and I've represented cultural heritage boards in the city of Los Angeles, where we piled everybody into a big yellow school bus, and we went out to see a bridge, and there we were, standing there in the sunshine, all 56 of us looking at this bridge and saying, is it of cultural significance? Those are the type of field trips that are being discussed here. When you were at that field trip, any interested party should have an opportunity to say something about it, and that that hearing, even though it's outside the room, such as this, they get to speak to it. And there should, needs to be a record of that field trip entered into the minutes, so that there's evidence of the fact that that hearing was held, and that it was done in accordance with proper procedures. Presentation of evidence. Anytime there is a gathering, soliciting, obtaining, receiving, and, you know, we can go on and on about the verbs there, and then the evidence, information about the subject property outside of the hearing, hearing room, these are the basic general guidelines that we ought to follow in this case, and I start with historic county council guidance on this issue. If this happens, what's the historic county council guidance? Don't do it, but if you do do it, disclose it. I know it's not as catchy as certain things are, but it does get to the point. If it does happen, then you need to, you need to disclose it, pure and simple, that's all there is to it. That's historic county council guidance based upon the case law that I just cited, as well as the resolution that I was trying to explain to you. Now, something has changed, and I did mention this earlier on, presentation of evidence outside of a hearing, or the receipt of information outside of a hearing, this is changing, because last year, the board supervisors approved a letter providing guidance or direction to the county council to draft appropriate changes to the county policy in order to allow site visits by the planning commission and board supervisor members, okay? And that's in the process right now, and this goes directly to, I know many of those questions about, at what time does individual site investigation take place? And appropriate changes to the draft guidance, again, since they're still being discussed by the county council, who's Leroy Smith, he'll, he'll provide direction on what those appropriate changes are to the resolution. But know that the board supervisors has given direction to county council to make it possible for these individual site visits to go on and to receive information outside of a public hearing, while at the same time maintaining those due process protections that I just talked about, okay? By the way, I don't have a expected time of arrival for that guidance, but know that it is under, it is, it is being discussed as I am speaking now. Okay, California conflict of interest law, very quickly here, basic rule here about not being financially interested in anything that's coming before you, either by contract or in that relationship. Again, this is two bases, one is a government code section 1090 question about interest in contracts, but there's also a common law provision against having a contractual relationship to the matter coming before you. I'm going through these very quickly, this is not even tip of the iceberg, this is still underwater, really. Disqualification under the Political Reform Act. A public official may not participate in a matter which he or she has a material, financial, or economic interest. The definition of material could cover a large telephone book, as far as what letters and the Fair Political Practices Commission has identified as material. And then, what is a financial and economic interest is also a matter of great definition and debate, and then, in the Fair Political Practices Commission, there's an eight-step process that walks you through a decision tree, very similar to SEQA and the, and the permit process that goes through what happens in a conflict of interest scenario. And again, time does not allow me to go deeply into that, but know that it is complex, and if you sense or see anything where that participation might happen, that's a time to stand back and say, I need to have it looked at. All right, municipal advisory councils. Just like the planning commission, you are a creature of state law, government code section 31010, and through a board supervisor resolution. So, the board of supervisors activates by resolution the ability to create the SOMAS MAC, the Satacoy MAC, the OHI MAC, MACs of different stripes, shapes, and locations. Your primary role is to advise the board on the following matters, anything that they deem fit to bring before you. And again, this is where the legislative aide of that board supervisor member, or whose district that you reside in, designates to you as being important. So, if there's a school being built in your area, or if it's being converted into a YMCA, these are things that are properly before you to get feedback from the community, all right? And again, notice these key words, public health, safety, welfare, and public works and planning, very similar to what the planning commission does, but those are your general issues that, that you are to look at, and this goes back again to local control over local issues, that really is what MACs are all about, in an advisory sense. You may represent the community to other governmental agencies, and you may have expenses covered per the board's direct discretion. Again, that's provided by state law, and the emphasis on the word is "may," okay? So, that's not a must or a shall, it's discretionary. And finally, you are subject to the Brown Act open meetings law. It is important that you treat your meetings in the same deal of seriousness with regards to notice, opportunities to be heard, a set agenda, sticking to the agenda and saying, well, yeah, it's similar to that project, go ahead, let's talk about it. That type of thing is not condoned by the Brown Act, and would possibly seen as a technical violation of the Brown Act, which would invalidate your actions, but again, your advisory, nothing that you say is going to have the force and effect of law, similar to what the planning commission does or the board supervisors, but I think it's good practice to keep that in mind. Again, this goes to, again, to the credibility and integrity and the veracity of the things that you do as a MAC member. Again, you're not in a quasi-judicatory or legislative matter, again, it's highly recommended that you conduct your hearings in a way that respects the individual due process rights of those people coming before you. So, let's say you really don't like Company X, and you never liked Company X, and you never will like Company X, but that doesn't mean you treat them any less than Mrs. so-and-so, who you love and endear and makes great pies. So, these are the things that, again, are enshrined in the Constitution, we may not like what we see, but that doesn't mean we don't give fair process. And again, that's bottom line, fair process and the respect for, for due process rights. So, that completes my discussion of legal matters for the planning commission.
Conflict of interest, is that always to do with financial or economics? Is that where it sits?
It does sit in that way, because that's where the law sits. The question is, do, does conflict of interest only deal with financial matters? Now, the whole financial aspect of conflict of interest has been defined, again, there's so much in terms of advisory letters from the FPPC on that issue, it would be wrong for me to say, that's only where it lands. It could find itself in a broader context, but without further research in the individual facts, I really can't say it's only having to do with my bank account, okay?
There, there are resources available that you can, you can take classes online about conflict of interest rules and, and, and learn a lot. I wanted to ask you, in the resolution that harkens back to just about the time he began-
Beginning with time?
There's a reference to bylaws of Ventura County Planning Commission, adopted October 23rd, 1968. Do those, I don't know those. Are they, do they deal with time limits and rebuttal and, and the things that Ms. Jensen was referring to?
The bylaws of the planning commission have been revised since 1968, and they provide for the order of presentation, and it also says that time limits are subject to the, excuse me, the chairperson's discretion, given what they see at any given hearing. So, there is a bit of leeway within your own bylaws with regards to timing.
Okay, and, but, but as far as going back to due process and fairness, if you allowed unlimited time for, say, you know, one, one side or the other, shouldn't, shouldn't there be some kind of, I don't know, parity? Shouldn't there be some kind of consistency with how much time is spent on one side or the other?
I think that's prudent, I think that's prudent. I mean, if the record shows that the opponents got five days of testimony and the project proponent got one hour, they would clearly be seen as favoring one side or the other in your decision-making. So, yeah, I think it's prudent. Okay? Okay, well, question?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you started having a duty to use skill, zeal, diligence, but on the other hand, you're not supposed to be doing any independent fact-finding, does that mean all this skill, diligence, and whatnot is, in an ideal world, really supposed to be happening at the hearing? Or whatever, whatever, or your own investigation of the existing documents, that if they raise questions, you're supposed to raise your questions with existing documents at the hearing, and not do any investigation with any third parties, including the county staff or anybody?
Okay. The question is, is the duty to act zealously with skill and diligence antithetical to the prohibition on independent investigation? And part two of that question is, does that also mean I cannot talk to staff? Okay, let's take part A first, and the quick answer is, no, they're not antithetical, okay? So, just because you cannot do independent research and review of the particular site does not mean that you have lost your skill, your zeal, and your diligence in doing your job. What that really means is that there are strong questions that are asked about what is before you, and if you want more information, there's nothing that stops the planning commissions from saying, planning staff, you are my eyes and ears, can you bring me something that I can understand this in a better way, shape, or form? And that's why there's pictures, I think Tricia Meyer did a great job of showing before and after pictures, because really, what is that showing you? That's what it would be if you stood in that spot and looked at that site, this is what you would actually see. Those are the type of things that you would bring, that intelligence and understanding of facts and materials to you. So, I don't think that they're antithetical, per se, that the fact that you can't go out there and see it yourself, that seeing, quote unquote, using your seeing-as-believing epistemology, if I can even use that term, you can understand things without actually having stood there and seen it, right? We all rationally understand certain things without actually having stood there, just like I rationally understand that there's an Eiffel Tower, but I'm not standing in Paris looking at it right now. So, that type of thing, I think, I don't want to get too, too philosophical or metaphysical about that whole thing, but here's the point. The point is, is that your duty is to understand the facts that are presented before you, and to do so, not, not impinging upon the process, which is to have all the information for everybody at the same time, at the same place. Having independent investigation without disclosure means that you have information that no one else has, that may affect your decision, and that that is improper. Now, let's say you did do an independent investigation, let's say you like to go to Google Maps, and you like to go and do aerial view, bird-eye view, every type of view known to mankind, you need to disclose that. You say, I stay up late at night, I watch these things, I study them, and, you know, you need to disclose that in a full and fair manner, so that people know what you have in your head while you make your decision. That's simply what it is. Okay? All right. I know that there's another presentation, two more presentations after mine, so I'll go through this next presentation very quickly. This is on SEQA. Not that you didn't have enough of it already. I'm only going to emphasize approvals, because as a decision-making body, that's really where you see it most, okay? You're not going to see it at the initial study stage, or the categorical exempt stage, or anything like that, you're going to see it at the approval stage, and there's really only three approvals that come before you from time to time. Well, there's, there's the exemption, but the exemption is really not that important here. One, okay, excuse me, it is, right, first one, categorical or statutorily exempt project. Secondly, approval using a NEGDEC or a mitigated NEGDEC, and the third, which is the EIR. So, looking at it from a three little bears, small, medium, and large. SEQA exempt project approval. Findings documenting the basis for the exemption are not required by SEQA or the SEQA guidelines, because hearings are not required for exempt project approvals, right? And there's a list of authorities that back that position up, all right? So, you're not going to see a whole set of findings, all you're going to see is, staff has determined that it fits within Class V exemption, bingo, that's it, that's all that's necessary. For NEGDEX, generally, before the project is approved, the lead agency making the decision can only do so if it finds on the basis of the initial study and public comments received and responses to them, that there's no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment. Can't approve it with a NEGDEC unless you find those key things in there. And the initial study is a fairly substantial document, and it does reveal a lot about what the project is, what impacts it will have, and the comments that have been received when the initial study was put out there for review. So, that's a NEGDEC approval. Two basic findings again, no substantial evidence showing a significant impact, and that reflects the lead agency's independent judgment and analysis, and this is important, again, because as Dan pointed out, a lot of times, third parties prepare these EIRs or NEGDEXs or things of that nature, or initial studies, it has to be known that your staff, in advising you and you yourself, have taken an independent look at that information and said, you know, does this pass muster? And do I have, have I just, have I exercised my independent judgment and not simply said yes or no to whatever's given before me? MND approvals also have the following things. Well, what is it you do? You adopt a program for reporting and monitoring on project changes, okay? So, that's what you do. How you do it is either through requiring it in the project description, or it was made a part of the condition of approval. That's the mitigation part of the NEGDEC, and why do you do it? So that you mitigate and avoid significant environmental impacts. That is the biggest difference between a NEGDEC and an MND, is that those things are going on in your project approval. EIR certification is of all of the following. One, it complies with SEQA and all of its requirements for notice, information, disclosure, analysis, certification that it reflects independent judgment, that it has been reviewed and considered by you, including public comments and lead agency responses, and that you certify that the SEQA is done prior to project approval. That's why on your recommended actions, the SEQA actions are done first. Look at it this way, this is information that you need to make your final decision on an entitlement, and that's basically what it means. That's why you do the SEQA certification before project approval. Other SEQA project approval issues, and we're coming to the end on our discussion here. When you use an EIR from an earlier project, as Dan pointed out, you have to run it through an analysis to make sure that that EIR from an earlier project is still valid, still applicable, and is, is current in its understanding of the environment and the impacts to be used. Then there's the addendum to your EIR on NEGDEC, which is a small technical changes to those prior documents, a supplemental, which is the mama bear size of the additional document, and then the papa bear size is the subsequent EIR, which makes that prior document more, and that has very specific triggers of when you are to use a subsequent EIR. And finally, there are responsibilities and decision-making processes when a responsible agency uses a document from another lead agency. So, let's say the lead agency was the City of Ventura, they did an EIR on a certain project, we only have a responsible agency role, well, we can use that EIR for a subsequent project, so long as certain things are met, and that happens very rarely, but when it does, it's fairly complex, but there are very specific rules on how that is to be done. That concludes my SEQA presentation for your understanding, just really over- That concludes my CEQA presentation for your understanding, just really overview of CEQA for your approval actions.
Very good. Thank you very much, Robert. Now, we have Nicole Donner here, who is here. She is our staff for the Cultural Heritage Board, so she's going to give you a little bit of history on the roles of the Cultural Heritage Board. Hopefully, about 20 minutes.
Okay. Where's the little? We should invest in two.
Yes, we should. Good morning. My name's Nicole Donner. I'm staff to the Cultural Heritage Board. My presentation will describe the Ventura County Cultural Heritage Program, the establishment of the Ventura County Cultural Heritage Board, the duties, responsibilities of the Cultural Heritage Board and staff, the county's agreement with five other cities to provide cultural heritage resource services, and, last but not least, the opportunities and benefits of a cultural heritage program. Okay. This is the what, when, who, why of the cultural heritage program. The Ventura County Board of Supervisors created the Cultural Heritage Board in 1966. They created it to review county-wide issues on historic preservation. They created it also to advise them on historic landmark designations. It's composed of seven members. One of each member represents five supervisory districts and the two-at-large members. Those two-at-large members are appointed by the five cultural heritage board members. The Cultural Heritage Board serves the unincorporated area, of course, and the five cities of Fillmore, Oxnard, Port Juaniemi, Thousand Oaks, and Simi Valley. The cities have their own ordinance, and this is important to note, because when you see an agenda for the Cultural Heritage Board, you'll see Ventura County Cultural Heritage Board agenda, and you will also see the Oxnard Cultural Heritage Board agenda. The meetings are held the second and fourth Monday of the month. They are a Brown Act meeting. People are notified by mail. The meetings are on the county's, county planning's website. And when we do go out and do site visits, as Robert said, we have to do a public notice for those site visits. All right. The first cultural heritage ordinance was adopted by the Board in 1968. That was two years after the concept of cultural heritage program. And the landmarks, there were three landmarks that were designated in that year. That's when they first started designating landmarks. The county annually designates anywhere from one to five landmarks a year. These landmarks represent any one of seven Ventura County historic periods. The periods, I'll go through those. The prehistoric period is obviously the Chumash Period. The Mission Period is the development of missions, the European colonization. One of the landmarks that we have, Mission Aqueduct, that was when it was created in 1800 to 1815, the Mission Aqueduct. Rancho Period, that was when Mexico gained independence from Spain, and as part of that independence, they started parceling out the Rancho lands to their Mexican colonial, loyalists, excuse me. There's the Anglo-Mexican Period. That was after the Mexican-American War in 1848. That period is significant for the birth of oil and agricultural industries. Obviously, we had Senator Thomas Bard, who was with the Stanford Brothers, who found oil in Sulphur Mountain in 1860, I think it was 1866. The European Americanization Period. This is important as far as when the railroad network was occurring. Railroad, when it came in, it significantly changed Ventura County, and actually, it wasn't even called Ventura County in the 1870s, because it was called Santa Barbara County. It separated out from Santa Barbara County and was created, I believe, in, actually, 1873. The regional culture, this was an important period for the, basically, the oil and ag were successful. You could see oil rigs up and down North Ventura Avenue, or Ventura Avenue and the coast. It was the development of bases by the Navy, right up until World War II. We had development of Port Juaniemi Base, the Oxnard Airport Base, Point Magoo. We started the development of San Nicholas Island in the late '40s. Then we had the post-war suburbanization and Cold War period. This is an important period where we had highway expansion, we had a military presence in Ventura County, again, and we also had the housing boom, because we were expanding our highways. All right. The Cultural Heritage Board was formed to identify, inventory, preserve, and protect cultural resources. Cultural resources are diverse. You can have building structures, sites, landscape features. Some people would say the right photograph is a pile of rocks. That's actually the Mission Aqueduct, which is very important to our, to our history. The center photo is a sycamore tree. Well, why is a sycamore tree important? Well, that was the tree that, I believe, General Portola passed when he was signing the treaty with General Pico for the Alta California land to be turned into a state. And then, on the very left-hand side, we have a structure that is at the Pratt House. Pratt House was built in 1909. It was one of five homes that were built by Green and Green Architects. It is a jewel in the county, and obviously, the other home that they built was the Gamble House in Pasadena. Okay, here's another set of diverse cultural resource sites. On the very left-hand side, we have the Allevistobe. That is not a county landmark, but it is a city landmark, a national landmark, and a state landmark. That was developed, dates differ on different resources, but the actual Adobe was built in 1837. That would be actually the oldest home in Ventura County. The hacienda portion of the Allevistobe was built later, in 1847, I believe. The middle photo is Stagecoach Road. Well, why was that important? That was the only access between LA and San Francisco by Stagecoach between 1860 and 1890s. It was a rough ride. That Stagecoach Road was actually blasted out of the hillside. It's located in the Santa Susana Pass and Smith Road, between those two roads, in Simi Valley. The right-hand side photo is Masonic Lodge property, but it was designated a landmark, an early landmark, it's landmark 18. It was for the Japanese cemetery. This was important in 1908. The Japanese had nowhere to bury their dead. They were not allowed to be buried with the general public. They were not allowed to own land, so they had to have somewhere to bury their dead. And this was a cemetery that the Masonic Lodge developed for the Japanese community. I think the last burial was 1960. All right. Here's a test. This is the first county landmark. Does anybody know?
Arkner House.
Yes. Excellent. In Santa Paula, on Telegraph Road. Why is this important? It's actually the first landmark. It's one of the best Queen Anne architectural styles in Southern California. This was developed by two local designers, Anloff and Ward, and it's one of the best architectural styles for the Queen Anne. Just so that you know, we have 171 landmarks designated. We have 10 points of interest. We had a recent point of interest just last year in Oxnard. And we have sites of merit, but we have probably several hundred sites of merit. All right. What is the regulatory authority for the cultural heritage program? Okay, we've got the cultural heritage ordinance. I said that it was first adopted in 1968, and it has had several amendments. The last was December of 2000. The cultural heritage ordinance allows for, it gives the authority of the Board, it gives terms and term limits, it provides for how they function, what their duties are. It also allows for how they designate landmarks, sites of merit, and points of interest. And it allows, or describes, how to review projects via a certificate of appropriateness, that is, the method. There are two types of certificates of appropriateness. One is a staff level for minor projects, and one is a board-level certificate of appropriateness, obviously approved by the Board. The different levels are necessary, because someone can come in, they're on a national register, and they want to change their sidewalk. They want to re-roof. Well, that is a minor project. However, things like window replacements, that is a major project. Windows are one of the most important historical aspects of a cultural resource, and we see a lot of window replacements to vinyl, which is kind of a shame. CEQA, CEQA is the legal framework for reviewing historic resources via a project, and it's the planning process. And then there's the Section 106 reviews. These are primarily for federally funded projects, and it allows the Cultural Heritage Board to review and comment to the State of California Historic Preservation Office on federally funded projects that may or may not have an impact on cultural resources. All right. The primary functions of the members, obviously, identification of potential cultural resources, designation of those landmarks or cultural resources in the unincorporated area, and recommendation of the same to the cities. Obviously, the cities, they do their own designations. City councils have their own authority to regulate the designation. They issue certificates of appropriateness on projects with existing landmarks and cultural resources, and they review and recommend Mills Act contracts to the decision-making Primary functions of the staff.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt?
Oh, sure.
Mills Act?
Oh, the Mills Act, I will describe in a later slide, and we'll get through that. That's an important program. That's a benefit of the cultural heritage program. Quickly, so, the review of new projects for potential impacts to historic resources. The staff does issue certificates of appropriateness for minor projects where landmarks exist. I prepare staff reports and presentations to the Cultural Heritage Board. I review environmental documents for potential impacts to historic resources and make recommendations to the Board. And I do the annual Mills Act inspections. As part of the cultural heritage program, we have done surveys in the last, I think, 30 years, the last, the earliest is 1980. We did three surveys that were funded by grants between '80 and '83, and we've done surveys in the last 30 years. There's a total of 11 surveys on this map. A wide swath of Santa Clara Valley has already been surveyed under four different surveys. Obviously, the downtowns, downtown Oxnard, downtown Santa Paula, and downtown Fillmore, where there are a lot of historic buildings, have been surveyed. Ojai has been surveyed, the East Valley of Ojai has been surveyed. And the most recent survey is the, was funded by the city of Ventura, which they did a portion of the North Ventura Avenue unincorporated area, and that's the West Side Historic Survey. That's the most recent, done in 2010. This survey map, just so that you know, is on the county planning division's website, and there is a link, a PDF link, to each one of these surveys with the, it's a searchable mode, that you can just put in an address and find the particular information on the individual property in that survey. It's really neat. All right. Historic preservation incentives. Now, we're getting into the Mills Act. First, the local. We have deviations that are allowed under the non-coastal zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance to deviate from the zoning ordinance for development standards. It could be as simple as a deviation of a setback or height requirement. It could be a size of a second dwelling unit. We did a recent cultural heritage deviation where the property owners had a historic building that was their single family. They wanted to build a second unit. They wanted to build a much bigger house, and we allowed the original single family to be converted to a second dwelling unit, although it was too large, so that was the deviation we allowed for a larger second dwelling unit than is allowed, so that they could build the single family. There's also subdivision deviations, and these are pretty much geared toward a reduction of the size of the lot. These are specifically for designated landmarks and sites of merit. There are some opportunities for points of interest to have some deviations. The state, the state provides for the historic building code. That allows for variations in the code for historic buildings. It's very helpful. It's not a strict reliance on the current building code, because the historic buildings do not necessarily meet current building code. There's also the Mills Act contracts. This is a program that was enacted in 1972. It allows for a reduction in property taxes for, between property owners that have, agree to maintain their historical buildings. It's a contract between the county and that property owner. It runs with the land. It's a 10-year contract. It automatically renews or self-renews, and it requires the property owner to either maintain and preserve that historic resource and/or restore certain aspects of that historic resource. The other is federal. There's a federal rehab tax credit. That's not widely used in this area, and it's specifically for income-producing properties. I went through the Mills Act. Average reduction in property taxes is anywhere from 40% to 60%. There is an early cancellation fee, a penalty, requires a public hearing by the Board, before the Board of Supervisors, and... And the cancellation fee is pretty stiff. It's 12% of current fair market value. We've had two new contracts that were considered by the Board of Supervisors in December of 2010. I'll show you those contracts, properties. Oh, this is a photograph that I thought, this is Landmark 75. It's been a landmark for many, many years. It's downtown Oxnard. It's the old Achilles Levy House. Achilles Levy was the originator of the Vancouver Levy. It has, over 30 years ago, it was converted to a tenured and apartment building. It was pretty rundown. It went up for sale in 2008. The new buyer applied for a Mills Act contract, and what he saved in property taxes, he has improved the property. So this is before Mills Act contract, and this is after. And he's done an absolutely beautiful job, and the Cultural Heritage Board has actually given him a Historic Preservation Award for the work that he's done. This is one of the two Ojai Valley Mills Act contracts that we recently received approval from the Board of Supervisors. This is, they're both Spanish colonial, single-family homes. They were both constructed in 1929. And prior to the Mills Act contract, these were not even on our radar. We didn't know anything about them. They were not listed as a local, national, or state landmark. Here's the inside. It's absolutely beautiful. It has Moorish influences, and this is their Juliet balcony, and below is the inside of their home. This is a very special property, the William Ford Hacienda in Ojai Valley. It's a blending of Spanish colonial and early Mexican hacienda. William Ford was responsible for the early development of safety glass, automotive safety glass. And his, that's where he made his money. And he was from Detroit, of course. And his cousin is Henry Ford. And this property is special because it was designed by Paul Rivera Williams. Paul Rivera Williams was the first African-American architect. He was a designer of not only the traditional style like this, but also of the 20th-century modern style. And this is, they're doing an absolutely beautiful job of restoring this. The property had been left, kind of abandoned, before they purchased it, and they've done an absolutely beautiful job. All right, this is my last slide. Ventura County has a rich and unique history, obviously. The work of the Cultural Heritage Program ensures that these resources will be available for the next generation to appreciate and enjoy. And that's the end of my slide, if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you very much to Nicole. I know that she does a really good job because she's passionate about this field, so it's nice to have her in this role at the county. I know we were hoping to be done by noon, and so I'm going to leave it up to the commission about how they'd like to handle the last item. We have the Planning Division's Long Range Planning and Grants Program that we could do now, or we could put it on another item on the agenda. I talked to Rosemary Rowan about it, and she's fine either way. So up to you. We can move forward now with that. It's probably a 20 to 25-minute presentation, or we could move it to either April 5th or April 12th, where we only have one item on each of those. It's up to you.
Why don't we go ahead and do it?
Okay, very good. Thank you, Rosemary. I'm not sure if you of all met Rosemary Rowan. So she has taken Bruce Smith's job here. So she comes to us from the county of San Diego, and she's been with us for, how long? Almost six months, I do believe. And this is Katie Machet, and I think most of you have seen Katie here at one time or the other.
Good morning, or should I say, good afternoon? Nearly, good afternoon. We will try to be brief because I'm sure everyone's stomach is growling by this point in time. As you know, Advanced Planning Section, we'll just do a really quick summary because you probably know that our main job here in Ventura County is really to modify, update as needed our regulatory documents. And we can move on to the first slide?
Oh, I think that you have to.
Oh.
It's going to be this one right there.
Well, we've moved on, actually, to the second slide, so I'll go back to the first. We have, our primary regulatory documents, of course, are the general plan and the zoning ordinances. We have two different zoning ordinances. The general plan includes the overall general plan, which I like to typically call the regional plan. And then within that, there are specific areas where we have much more detailed area plans. We have and need to process on a fairly regular basis both privately and publicly initiated amendments to those documents. Currently, we're doing both. And in addition to that, in our group, we handle the biology aspect of both the permitting process and also looking at biology in terms of long-range planning as well. Today, we'd like to focus on how the grant programs affect the updates to those regulatory documents. And currently, we have three different programs that are being funded by grants. The first, which Katie will discuss in much more detail, is some updates to our coastal area plan and also the coastal zoning ordinance. As part of that same funding source, she'll describe some changes, some studies that we're doing on biology. And then I will come back and talk more about another plan. We're doing an area plan update, or we hope to do an area plan update, using grant funds for the community of Saticoy. At this point, I'll hand it over to Katie.
To me.
Oh.
Thanks. Okay, so this is just what we're going to cover in hopefully just a few short minutes. I'm going to tell you just a little bit about our grants program. Right now, grants fund about 4% of our Planning Division budget, but that is expected to increase in the next fiscal year to maybe $150,000, $200,000 for our Advanced Planning Section, so a small but critical piece of our budget. And as Rosemary mentioned, our grants fund a lot of different kinds of projects. Area plan updates, ordinance amendments, public information projects, and then some special projects, like Nicole mentioned, our historical resources surveys are often funded by grants. Our grant funding comes from a lot of different places, mainly federal, state, and regional government, so places like the Department of the Interior, the Office of Historic Preservation, or SCAG. But we've also looked to some less traditional funding sources. Foundations like the William and Flora Hewlett Foundation will sometimes fund projects related to environmental conservation. And even private companies, sometimes as part of their corporate giving, will have projects and funding programs that include a planning component. So Kaiser Permanente sometimes funds public health projects that have a planning element to them. Here are some of our past and our current grant projects. You might remember the parking ordinance update that we did a few years ago. That was funded by a SCAG grant, the Transportation Leadership in Land Use Planning Grant, as was our Build It Smart website, which you should definitely take a look at if you have not already. And our recent Conservation Subdivision Ordinance, that was a few years ago, was funded by a Santa Clara River Restoration Project Grant. That's administered by the Fish and Wildlife Service. And then we have three current grant projects. Our first is a Coastal Biological Resources Project. That's funded by the Coastal Impact Assistance Program, CIAP, which is also administered by Fish and Wildlife Service. Our Local Coastal Program Amendments Project, also a CIAP-funded project. And then we have a SCAG Compass Blueprint Demonstration Project in Old Town Saticoy to do some planning in that area. And then we're hoping, we have two pending applications to get money for a full Saticoy area plan update. We're applying for a Sustainable Communities Planning Grant and a Caltrans Community-Based Transportation Planning Grant. So I want to talk a little bit more about our CIAP-funded programs, the Coastal Biological Resources Project and the LCP Amendment. Our Coastal Bio Project, as we call it, is focused on the Santa Monica Mountains, and it includes a habitat evaluation, taking a look at the existing vegetation in the Santa Monica Mountains and the future development potential in that area if everything were to develop in accordance with the patterns that we're seeing out there right now. And then we're also working on developing some habitat assessment procedures. So developing a methodology to identify what the Coastal Commission calls ESHA, or environmentally sensitive habitat, and then developing some standard mitigation methodologies so that we can mitigate in a kind of consistent way potential impacts to those sensitive habitats. And once we've developed these new procedures and goals, we're going to incorporate them into our local coastal plan and program. And we're going to do some education and training as well, develop some materials that we can present to our staff, as well as consultants that work in that area and the public in general, to help them understand how to implement our new procedures. You may know that we've also recently updated our initial study assessment guidelines related to biology. And then we do have a kind of broader public outreach program that's going to be happening as part of these two projects. And our first workshop is tentatively scheduled for May 17th, so do keep that date in mind. We'd love to get your input on these projects. And our Local Coastal Program Amendments Project. The purpose of this is to create a more usable and current ordinance and area plan for our coastal zone. Our last comprehensive revision of the ordinance was in the late 1980s, just after it was adopted, so it's pretty dated. And so what we've done is we've divided this project into two phases. The first phase is going to fix things like clerical errors and clarify the ordinance language and just make some very minor policy changes. And then the second phase will look at some broader policy issues, landscaping standards and tree protection, and incorporating those biological resources recommendations from our other CIAP projects. And there will be a review by your commission of both phases of this project, as well as the board, but ultimately, it would need to be adopted by the Coastal Commission to be implemented. And I want to tell you a little bit more about the LCP Amendment Project. Phase one, like I said, it's going to be some ordinance language clarification. So fixing the typos and the grammatical errors that are unfortunately all over our ordinance, getting rid of some of the ambiguous and undefined terms that we have in our ordinance. So for example, we tend to use a term like residential use, but we don't define it anywhere, and that makes it a little bit hard to consistently implement our ordinance regulations. We want to define those terms, and we're going to add to and update our definitions to address issues like that, also to bring in some of the definitions from the Coastal Act that are included in our coastal ordinance right now, and then make some more consistency between the definitions in our non-coastal ordinance and our coastal ordinance, because it's just easier for everyone if those two ordinances match as much as possible. We're also going to reorganize our use matrix. I don't know if you've seen our ordinance. It has lots of funny-looking little symbols that are supposed to explain the permitting requirements. We're going to get rid of those symbols, and we're going to replace them with letters that are hopefully going to be a little more straightforward in explaining what kind of permit is required for each use. We're going to update our permit exemptions so that they're consistent with the requirements of the Coastal Act, and then just make sure that our ordinance generally uses current standards and practices. We will make some minor policy changes as part of Phase one. We're going to simplify our somewhat confusing hype standards and make sure that they're very clear. We're going to update regulations for things like wet bars so that they just reflect kind of the design practices that are in place today. The same with satellite dish antennas. Our ordinance was written when they were big, cumbersome things, and it's just really not the state of the technology today, so we want to make sure our regulations really reflect current technology. And we'll also update our farm worker and animal caretaker dwelling unit regulations so they're consistent with what you see in our non-coastal ordinance. And then, as part of Phase two, we're going to take a look at some bigger policy issues. So we will be doing an update to our landscaping and screening requirements, primarily to look at improving water efficiency of landscaping, but also just to provide some more guidance on how we'd like to see landscaping happen in the coastal zone. And then taking our screening regulations, which are right now scattered throughout our coastal ordinance, and bringing them into one place and making them more consistent. Right now, we have a tree protection ordinance only in our non-coastal zone, so we want to bring that ordinance into the coastal zone and add those regulations that are in place right now in our non-coastal zoning ordinance. But as we do that, we want to get rid of any confusing standards or procedures in our ordinance. So for instance, right now, we have a requirement to protect invasive trees, which is not really what we're hoping to accomplish with our tree protection ordinance. So things like that, we want to get rid of and maybe clarify some things in our tree protection ordinance. And like I mentioned, the habitat assessment and mitigation procedures that we're developing as part of the Coastal Biological Resources piece of the CIAP work will bring in as part of Phase two of our LCP Amendment Project. And then we're going to make a couple other more minor policy changes. We want to add in the coastal trail maps and policies. Our ordinance was written before the coastal trail was even conceived, so it makes no mention of the coastal trail, but that's an important resource that we want to make sure we incorporate into our ordinance and area plan. We want to update our film permit standards so that they're more consistent with what we allow in the non-coastal zoning ordinance. They just are a little more user-friendly. And the assembly use regulations that we developed a few years ago for our non-coastal zoning ordinance, we'd also like to bring those into our coastal zoning ordinance, and then just do some update to things like grading regulations and our parking and loading regulations. And now I will turn it back over to Rosemary.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Can I just ask for a clarification? When you're talking about the invasive trees, are you talking about eucalyptus stands, like windbreaks?
Right, right. Just anything that's considered invasive.
Thank you.
The, moving on from CIAP, and by the way, we do expect the Phase one CIAP changes to the coastal zoning ordinance to before the Planning Commission, probably within the next three months, we hope. We don't have a precise date on that, but in terms of previews of coming attractions, there are probably two changes that will become before the Planning Commission within the next three to four months, and that's the first. The second is a density bonus ordinance. Saticoy, however, is an area plan update that we're looking at, and Saticoy is just in its infancy, so that is, this is a project that would not become before your commission for quite some time, although we may bring updates on this project to you to keep you informed about it. Old Town Saticoy, the first part of this project, really is going to be implementing a grant that we have received, an award we've received, from the Southern California Association of Governments, who has the unfortunate acronym of SCAG. And we expect that to be about $125,000. Although we don't have a contract for this yet, we have interviewed consultants who will be working on this project. With an area plan update, it's somewhat different than a zone text amendment, where you have some rather very brief, objective-sounding texts that's going to be applied county-wide across a broad area. An area plan update is going, is much more detailed and involves a lot of community outreach in that process. And Old Town Saticoy will be no exception. This project is really, it's called a Compass Blueprint Demonstration Project, and part of the emphasis of this project is sustainability. And one reason for that is that that's one of the goals of the State of California, who supplied the money ultimately for the project. But what we will be looking at is really a very focused area within the larger Saticoy area plan will be, some of the activities that will be conducted are on the slide. They include, first of all, background and technical analysis. We're planning on doing what's called a design charrette, which is a very intensive public outreach or physical planning activity that will occur within the community. We're going to ultimately be looking at area plan recommendations that come out of that activity. We're hoping to put together some new standards for mixed-use development within Old Town that might, for instance, combine residential with commercial land use. And we'll also be looking at design guidelines. Now, one of the interesting aspects of this project is that there are some private landowners who initiated a plan amendment through the board. who initiated a plan amendment through the board. There was a board screening in late 2010 where some private landowners wished to change the land use on their parcels from a fairly low-density residential use to industrial use. And one of the reasons why they want to do that is somewhat interesting, because it's an issue that's going to affect the entire plan update, and that is the city's water policy. This area, of course, is within the sphere of influence of the city of Ventura, and so we will also need to coordinate fairly carefully with the city on this project. But the city's water policy right now for Saticoy specifically is very restrictive, and it's restrictive in terms of the diameter of the water pipe that can serve properties and land use in this area. So we may also need to have some discussions with the city regarding their water policy, because it's going to be rather difficult for us to determine appropriate land uses for Saticoy without some clarity regarding the city's water policy. But one of the things we'll also be doing, we'll be coordinating with some landowners, and you can see in this slide where their properties lie. Their properties are just south of an area that's currently used for residential use, and also south of another area that where there's an old railroad depot station, which you can see a slide of on this slide. The rail line in this area is no longer active, although it's not clear that it will never be active. It currently is not, and this depot is being leased out to private property owners. I believe it's owned by the county of Ventura, and we will be looking at appropriate land use also for this property during this process. As Katie mentioned, we already submitted another grant for even more money, because area plan updates are expensive. And we're looking to get additional money to do a full area plan update. If we get the funds from the state, we will look at not just Old Town, but the entire area plan. The balance of the area plan is largely industrial use. So that area plan update will include a look at the industrial use, along with the residential and commercial use in the community. And of course, we'll need to do a sequel analysis as part of that. Well, that's it, unless you have some questions for either Katie or myself.
Yeah, I had a question. The city was involved in the Saticoy Wells Community Plan Development.
That's correct.
How is your plan, I mean, it's under the sphere of influence of the city. How does your plan interface with that plan? Is there some kind of cross-work being done between the two entities, or how does that work?
Well, there should be some form of cross-pollination, and it's my understanding that one of our responsibilities really is to try to coordinate planning efforts on the part of the city and the county in areas where we are within a sphere of influence. So one of the first things that we're going to be doing is looking at their area plan. It's very possible that we'll end up with a plan that's very similar to the city of Ventura. I'm not predicting, but just opening up the area possibility, if we end up as part of our more concentrated effort or public outreach program to come up with some plans that are different than the city's, we may approach the city and they may want to, in fact, amend their plan. Just possible. But we will certainly be reading their plan. They also went through a public outreach effort, which I would assume was more focused on their actual boundary, not on the area within the county. But we will be taking a close look at that plan and seeing to what degree what the city is doing, or the plans for the city are appropriate for the county. I would like to mention, however, that it's my understanding that the city's plans for the county would require higher intensity development than you could actually build, given the city's current water policy. So that will be rather interesting.
Yeah, you noticed that little conflict, too, huh?
Just a little.
We have a request by Lynn Jensen to make a short presentation regarding item number two on the agenda, the Planning Division's Permit Processing Program. We've gone beyond our time. What's your pleasure?
She's stuck it out for four hours.
Lynn, come on, you've stuck it out.
Sorry, this is kind of nice. I get you guys all to myself.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, thank you, Kim. This was a great presentation today. Learned a lot, and I appreciate it. As you know, VC Colab represents 300 members here in the county, and we find that our members are entrepreneurs, they're business people, and many of them operate out in the county of Ventura, farmers and ranchers, and they're potential job creators. I think that's what we're looking for here in the county, is perhaps to see more employment. And the problem for business in general is uncertainty. For our businesses, which include agriculture, and for them to grow, we need to have a mutually beneficial system in terms of processing permits. And what I'm seeing by a lot of phone calls and all kinds of things is that while regulation is necessary, and it's important that it reduces the uncertainty, not increases it. And what we're seeing is a significant conflict in places in the process from our applicant members, particularly on discretionary projects, including CUPs, et cetera. And I think Tricia outlined the number of kinds of CUPs that we have out in the county. There's a phenomenal number of different kinds of businesses that operate out there, in the industrial areas and also in the agriculture and open space. There's quite a bit of agriculture, as you know, out there. So what we're seeing, I think the key number-one problem for our business members is the fee reimbursement agreement when they get into the CUP process. That fee reimbursement agreement has no real budget, it has no timeframe, it produces monthly invoices every month, and there's no recourse or accountability, and there's really no incentive for the process to be less, to take less time. Also, what we're seeing is an increase in the length of the staff reports, the length and the number of conditions in the last five years. And also, one thing I'm getting a lot of calls about is the increase in the aggressive code enforcement practices, and I'm wondering what the relationship with code enforcement is with planning, because sometimes I see or our business members see these letters come out, and we're wondering if they are contacting the planning division, talking to your planning staff, when they send out these letters requesting people to get CUPs and such. If there is, I don't know if you guys have a relationship with them, or if they're completely separate, or how that all works. But what we see is that this kind of a process creates unintended consequences for our businesses. And what we think is that there just needs to be more communication with the agricultural industry, with the agricultural members out there. And one example that we have seen recently is that the Board of Supervisors directed the Public Works Agency to revise their grading standards. And what we did, Colab was part of it, participated and provided leadership for the Technical Advisory Committee working with Public Works. And we found that that process was so successful in terms of creating an understanding between an agency that's regulating and those that are being regulated. And we got past this idea of process, and we started talking about people. What do people do? What do these businesses do? What do they need? What is important to regulate? And we actually found a lot of agreement on things that were not needed to be regulated. And I think Public Works came into the position, not really knowing a lot about farming, because they haven't regulated agricultural grading in the past. They learned a lot, and I think in the speaking that we had with them, we came up with some standards that the agricultural industry is quite supportive of at this time. So I guess the reason why I wanted to talk to you guys today in the Planning Commission is just to request that perhaps we could have an agricultural technical advisory committee to work with planning, to talk about all these things that are happening out in the community, perhaps reduce the amount of stress that's going on with the businesses, and try to create some more business going on out there. Because the agricultural industry is expanding, and there are new practices that are happening out there, and I think that we need to be able to communicate with the planning group on those new practices and talk about how they're going to be regulated in the future. So, thank you.
Any comments? Well, it makes sense to me.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, anything further?
I would just say a couple of things on that. First of all, you know, we have been doing a lot of outreach with the Ag community. I know I was just over at APAC, the Ag Policy Advisory Committee, and I think Lynn was there for that. And we have a close relationship with the Ag Commissioner. We sit on the Ag Futures Alliance Board and their subcommittee, their land use subcommittee. When I was over at APAC, that's, it's kind of the issue that I was putting in front of APAC and the Ag Commissioner, too. There's a lot of different branches to the agricultural community, and we're trying to get some sort of a, you know, everybody's on our list, right? VC Colab is on our list, the open space folks, I mean, every community in the Ag is on our list, but whether we can get them to the table and all talk at once about different sort of planning-related issues, that's what we're looking to. And I think the last time we spoke of that, Alex Teague agreed to get, from Limonera, agreed to get that kind of working group together, because what I wanted to fully understand from the agricultural community is what in the ordinance was it that they believed was onerous to the agricultural community? Because there's, much of what happens in agriculture is fully exempt. I mean, you can build 20,000 square foot of accessory structures, you can do all of the agricultural row cropping unless you're in the SRP. So that's kind of been an interesting issue, you know, land clearing and the scenic resource protection. There's the current ordinance, and then there's perhaps some discussions on what anybody would like to propose for the board to amend. So there's issues always going on. I think that we're engaged with the community, we're always wanting to reach out more, and so we go to these groups and saying, what would you like to do? So anytime that you want to come in, Lynn, or gather a group of people together and have the planning department come out and talk and listen, or, you know, express your views, we are always willing to do that. So we can arrange that kind of room here, or we're willing to come out. So that's the message that we've been trying to get across through the Ag Futures Alliance, through Limonera, through VC Colab, through APAC, through the Ag Commissioner, that's saying, we're here and we're willing to listen and we're wanting to see what exactly the issues are. Because we are really trying to solve it. The issue of the fee reimbursement agreement, I haven't heard that particular issue come up before. The fee reimbursement, you know, the Board of Supervisors directs how the planning department and every other agency bills and collects money, right? We're a revenue offset, they direct that we do that, and so I don't see the fee reimbursement as an open-ended ticket, right? We still have a public resource, the timeline, permit stream, lighting act timeline, we track time for everything in a huge way, and I don't want you to believe that, to leave here believing that we don't, right? Every time a project goes past 31 days on the incompleteness, it's tagged, it's flagged, somebody's looking at what that issue is. So we've done a lot of work in the last three years to make sure that permits come in and permits come out, and since I've been the planning director, the hourly rate hasn't risen. We're trying to be very, very careful with that, but it is high. It's $150 an hour, $155. So that adds up very quickly if you work on somebody's permit. So if, what I like to see is the planning director, some very specific case examples, not, you know, that you've received a bunch of calls, and what are those calls? And bring those people in, and let's talk about what happened in their specific scenario, because I'm very methodical about tracking down an issue. What was the issue? What happened? How did we get to that point? And there's always a story. And the story, we're either learning something in the planning department about that story, or we're teaching something to the consultants, or we're showing something to the landowner, this is what happens if you do this. So, you know, I like to deconstruct those situations where things went wrong, and so I would like you to, and I would encourage you to bring those to my attention, so we can address them each and every time. So, you know, we are reaching out. It's very important to me, I think that we've said that here before, Chris said it here this morning, there is a big outreach program that we really want to undertake, and I'm really passionate about undertaking that with the agricultural community.
So I think that's important, that we try to be a part of the outreach process, but not just understanding what your process is, but really talking about how to make it better from the applicant's point of view.
Absolutely. That's what I want to hear.
Okay. Going back to that slide before, are there any plans for, I think it's a SOMAS area plan? One hearing way back, wanted to know if there were better planning tools available for SOMAS.
I'm not aware of any plans for a SOMAS area plan.
What would have to happen in order to have something like that? Would there have to be a board direction? Would there, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely. The board would have to direct us to put an area plan together.
What about the Planning Commission's role in recommending that the board consider looking at that?
I think that you can give them that recommendation. I think that the SOMAS MAC just formed two weeks ago, so I haven't heard any specifics of what the specific concerns are or what we would put in an SOMAS area plan, but you can recommend that.
The only thing that popped into mind was testimony at a hearing some, it might have even been years ago, where there was something that was controversial, and there really wasn't a lot of leeway that the Planning Commission had, that we were going by standards. It had to do with a fellow who wanted to store his Porsche car collection. And there was a recommendation during the testimony that SOMAS get an area plan. That was a while back, so it's not coming.
Yeah, I haven't received any direction from the board to prepare a new area plan, so it would either take, you know, a recommendation from your Planning Commission asking that they do that, and then directing me and providing me with the staffing and the budget to do that, and no, that hasn't happened.
Yeah, that would be an agenda-ish item, again.
I think we ought to take an opportunity to thank our clerk. I understand she's moving on. A job well done.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations to Danielle. This will be her last meeting. She's going up to the Board of Supervisors, so she's going to work for Roberta Rodriguez, the clerk of the board, and she'll be down here for board items, so that will be exciting. She'll get to hear other things other than land use. Not that land use isn't exciting and fascinating. And I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't have an item on the agenda, and that's my oversight of my report back to you, and that's typically what happens, but I do want to let you know that the hearing on March 29th has been taken off your agenda, just to make sure that you know that. So we are trying to work out that situation with that applicant. So that's what I have. I have an item for you on the 5th, and for the 12th of April, and for the 24th of May. Yes? And do you have anything for me?
No.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time today.
Meeting adjourned. Danielle, do you want to?